Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 1st, 2012 Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order at this time. Before we get into our regular agenda, I'd like to recognize some special guests here tonight. That would be PAC 374 of D N 10 of the Cub Scouts. We have the folks with us tonight are Tiger Scouts, Brendan Hensley, Connor Klein, Owen Brewer, Matthew Massengill, Tyler Welsh, Garrett Barnes, Dylan Winter, and the D N leader is Chris Winter. So, folks, welcome, and I'm glad you're here. I hope you don't get too bored with it, okay? We are very, very proud of you, young men. All that being said, we'll move on into our agenda. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. We have only two items on that this evening, that being Manson Crossing Drive, a final plat for eight, oh, excuse me, for right-of-way of .25 acres extended north of Manson Crossing Drive. Puckett Creek Station's LLP is a developer. And the other item is First Baptist Church, a site plan for building additions on 1.54 acres, some commercial highway located at 200 East Main. First Baptist Church is a developer. Is there any member of the planning commission, or anybody on the staff, or anybody in tonight's audience that'd like either of these items removed from the consent agenda for further discussion this evening?
Yes, sir. The engineers for First Baptist Church have asked that you defer action on the item until our next meeting. They need some more time to work on the staff comments.
Okay, so item B, First Baptist Church is removed from the consent agenda. Anybody else?
Not chairman with that notation. I've moved for adoption of the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We'll move into the public hearing portion of our agenda. We have four public hearings scheduled this evening, first of which is Murfreesboro Municipal Airport Master Plan Amendment, Airport Layout Plan, which is known as the ALP. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Mr. Adelot.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. The first public hearing is, as you said, is a proposed amendment to the airport layout plan for our Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. This is a part of a comprehensive plan. Basically, it's a comprehensive plan for a portion of the property that the city owns and a very major part of our city. The airport itself and then the different height zones around it are all figured into this plan. The purpose of this public hearing is to, first, to get public input, and then for you to afterwards to consider whether or not to adopt the plan as presented, to send it back for more study, or to adopt it or reject it. It's pretty much an opportunity that you have tonight to deal with a comprehensive plan. I will tell you that this is something that comes through our airport commission. The airport commission has studied on this, and they are recommending approval. We have with us tonight Mr. Chad Gerke. He's going to make a short presentation. There are several members of the airport commission that may have some testimony that they'll provide during the public hearing as well. There are also the consultants who worked on the project, who Mr. Gerke will introduce. I'll be glad to answer questions, and I'll be taking notes during the public hearing to be prepared to answer questions that are beyond their capabilities to answer.
Okay. Mr. Gerke? We have plenty of seats down here. If anybody would like to sit down, please come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb and members of the planning commission. I'm honored to be here tonight and to present to you the proposed airport layout plan for the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. My name is Chad Gerke. I am the airport manager for the city of Murfreesboro at the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. And joining me tonight is, like Joseph said, members of the airport commission and the chair, George Huddleston Jr. Along with me are also the consultants from Atkins, Darren Duckworth, and also David Schilling. And then from Hanson Professional Services is Tim Haskell and Joanne Bingham, and they will also be able to answer any questions from you in their part of this airport layout plan process. This process began back in 2008, and it is important as stewards of the airport that every so many years, usually on a five- to 10-year basis, that we review the plans of the airport to make sure that our facilities are in compliance with the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration's standards for designs and regulations, and also to look at our demands from our companies that are based there, and also the various users of the airport that are in our community. We started this process, and it is a great deal of data collection, looking at talking to our base customers, including the university, and looking at the types of aircraft and the equipment that is coming in and out of the airport. With that in mind, our consultants also presented a number of alternatives for us to look at, for the airport commission and its study group to look at for the design of this airport. They eventually selected one design that is part of your airport layout plan drawings, the future drawing, and that is the basis then for all the other drawings that you see regarding the approaches and things like that. This plan in particular, although we've done these airport layout plans on a regular basis, this plan in particular, the most important feature of this airport layout plan is the runway extension. You'll see an extension of the runway, 11,002 feet to the north. This extension is all on airport property. The property is able to support that. The airport, even though the runway extension is on there, will still maintain its status as a B2 category airport. That is the designation by the FAA as designed as to the size of airport and its capabilities. It does not change. The other improvements that you see there on this airport layout plan are the areas around the terminal building, some increased ramp, fuel farm changes, and things like that. On the north side, where we previously had soccer fields, they're still being used today as multipurpose fields, you will see an area that is being designated for future MTSU growth. As you know, Middle Tennessee State University and its aerospace department are a very significant part of the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport, and it is important that we make sure and set aside room for their future improvements at the airport. Further north on those fields, we also show an area set aside for public use of corporate hangars and tea hangars. This, as I said, has started in 2008. The process for an airport layout plan is once our airport commission has approved the plans, the consultants then send these plans to the Tennessee Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division for their comments and review. After that, once those comments and reviews have been addressed, it is sent to the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration, for their comments, reviews, and coordination to all their various departments that they have. This airport layout plan has gone through that process. Our consultants did a wonderful job. We received very few comments from the state and from the FAA. It is now here, back to us, and the last step is for this plan to be approved locally by the community. So, we bring this to you. It is, I believe, a very good document. It will be a good tool for us in the future. It is not just limited to the airport property. As Joseph stated, it also has ramifications on our airport overlay district or the airspace that protects the airport. With the extension, that is also extended. But I believe that we have a good document here for your review, and again, I'll have our consultants here for any questions that you might have and any comments that the airport commission would also like to make.
Any questions of Mr. Gerke at this time?
I'd like to correct something. Mr. Gerke, you made a misstatement. You said 11,002.
I'm sorry, 1102. Sorry.
1,102.
That may have been, yeah. That would put us well beyond a jarnet, and we're going to stay well from that.
Well, then you'd have trouble with the landfill, I think.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Adelot. I thought you said that, but I was no correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Adelot, do you have any comments, sir?
No, sir. May after the public hearing, but not before.
Okay. In a minute, we'll conduct the public hearing. First, let me go over the rules that we conduct our public hearings by, in case you've never been here before. We'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward to the microphone that would like to speak either for or against this proposal, or any of the public hearings tonight. Please, when you come to the microphone, state your name and give your address. If you would, make all your comments directly to the planning commission. Any type of comments from the floor, applause, or anything like that are not appropriate for this meeting. We would ask you, if you have questions, we will ask the staff to make notes of your questions. We will handle those questions, or ask the staff or the people that are making the presentation to answer those questions at the end of the public hearing section. Each person will have an opportunity to come up during the public hearing, but hold your comments no more than three minutes, because we have quite a few people here tonight, so we might have numerous people that want to speak, plus we have four public hearings that we're going to conduct. So, I would ask you to limit your time up there and try not to be redundant if possible. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name's Phil Loubert. I live at 2710 Howell Drive. One question I would have of the presenters, I believe there was some mention in the news article about this extension, even though it's not changing the status of the airport, it would allow for larger airplanes to be flown in and out, particularly by students. I'd like to know if that's correct. And my comment would be, as a resident in the area, I've never quite understood the, it seems like there was a considerable lack of planning in the first place for the city to have such a large airport surrounded by such dense residential areas, and why the residential areas were allowed to be planned pretty much directly under the flight path. It seems to me a mistake for the city in the long-term interest of the quality of life here to allow this airport to continue to expand. I would think this would be perhaps a good time to think about what to do with this airport that's right in the middle of the city and causes quite a bit of, I would say, disruptive noise for the neighborhoods around it. So, I would be, as a citizen, I would be opposed to any expansion that would allow larger airplanes or more flights. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please, please, let me reiterate, applause are not appropriate for this meeting, okay?
My name is Anthony Wertz. I live at 1439 Winterberry Drive. If you don't know where that's at, I can hit airport property with a rock from my front yard. I've been living there for about one year. I'm very familiar with the aircraft that move in and out of Murfreesboro, and I have no trouble with the noise factor that comes from the MTSU aircraft. They're basically the same as listening to a Volkswagen two blocks over. The thing I would like the planning commission to field is, is that, for instance, there is a twin turboprop that has been flying in and out lately, and the noise of a twin turboprop is considerably lower than the naturally aspirated six cylinders that are in the Cessnas. If, when you expand an airport to 3,000 feet, that would allow for much larger turboprops and even light jet traffic, like Lear jets, to land on that strip, the noise level will increase considerably if those aircraft are allowed in. Also, usually when you have an airport expansion like that, you're going to have greater amounts of traffic both day and night. As it is for our neighborhood, it's, the noise level and so forth with my neighbors I've talked to is acceptable. If that, if these factors increase, like in numbers and so forth, our property values will probably halve because we are so close to the airport. If you would, please, as the planning commission, please consider, please consider that as far as the neighbors that are very close to the airport, and ask those questions of the individuals that are involved in the planning of this.
Thank you, Mr. Wertz.
Hello. My name is Steve Murphy. I live at 802 Bradford Place. I'm a resident of Bradford Place and a treasurer of the homeowners association. On behalf of Bradford Place Community Association, as resident and myself, I would like to take this opportunity to say I am adamant opposition to the expansion of the runway for the Murfreesboro City Airport. We're not here to oppose the improvements to the terminal or resurfacing the existing runway. We're here to oppose the expansion of the runway itself. We believe that the runway expansion serves to bring larger aircraft into Murfreesboro. With larger aircraft capabilities, the audience expands and flight traffic will increase. We're concerned about the safety of our friends, neighbors, and ourselves. I have a coworker who lives not far from the Dover Street crash site. Just today, she told me that she had trouble sleeping for a long time afterwards. She was just waiting for a plane to crash into her house. This is a very real fear, and one that will only increase when larger and faster aircraft are allowed to land near her home. There are no less than 11 schools where our children learn and play outdoors, where they learn and they also play outdoors, within a two-mile radius of the airport, where the airport proposes to allow larger planes to land. In addition to the safety, we're concerned about, among other things, pollution, noise, and diminished property values. By allowing the development of residences and businesses around the airport after its current state, the city of Murfreesboro has precluded itself from being able to responsibly expand the airport regardless of the capacity to do so. To allow expansion would impart a disproportionate economic burden to the neighbors near the airport or near the flight path. According to realtors and appraisers, millions of dollars of development, both commercial and residential, near the airport would suffer depreciated value. I will be joining my friends and neighbors in collecting signatures for a petition to oppose the expansion of the airport. Additionally, we will be reviewing all of our options for formally protesting the expansion. I would ask that people please make it a point to see me after this meeting. I and others have contacted several people to raise awareness about the hazards and detriments for the airport runway extension. These include FAA Next Gen Office, which handles complaints, the Office of the Tennessee Commissioner of Transportation, the Tennessee Aeronautics Division, attorneys, realtors, appraisers, neighbors, and the T double S double A, which uses McKnight Park for events. I will continue to raise awareness and wage a campaign until the issue of the runway extension is put to rest. Recently, an article in the Daily News Journal provided information from George Huddleston Jr., the chairman of the Murfreesboro Airport Commission, and Chad Gerke, the airport manager. I would like to provide response to most of that information tonight. Mr. Huddleston stated that they're just trying to keep up with the demands and that there will never be another runway extension at the Murfreesboro Airport. If the runway can't be extended in the future and the population growth of Murfreesboro is an argument, I would present that investing additional resources into an airport that will soon, once again, become outdated and incapable of servicing the needs of the community with no hope for expansion is a waste of funds. Smyrna, which can handle Rutherford County's needs, is just minutes down the street. It was stated that the runway work is supposed to be completed by the summer of 2013. Well, first, it hasn't received full approval. In fact, only the layout plan has been approved by the agencies that have to approve it. Neither the extension nor the funding has been approved. An MTSU study estimates that the airport has a $70 million economic impact. Has there been a study to determine what economic impact will occur if the runway is extended? If so, does that study include the detraction from the Smyrna Airport, which is just a few minutes down the road and already has the capacity to service larger aircrafts than City of Murfreesboro Airport will ever have? In November, Mr. Gerke stated that he didn't believe that they had done that. It is physically irresponsible to propose spending $5.2 million without being able to provide some solid economic justification, more than just, "Uh, this is what we want." Mr. Gerke acknowledged that the extension won't increase employment by much, and in attempt to push this through for the few, the detriment of many has been ignored and not studied. The FAA suggests buying residential property for the larger runway protection zone, but apparently, the FAA's suggestions don't mean enough to the airport to actually make those purchases. Does the city of Murfreesboro Airport know something about airport safety that the FAA does not? Money is not an excuse for skimping on the safety of the citizens of Murfreesboro, or the lack thereof. Mr. Huddleston stated that he doubts that neighbors will face any increase of risk. It doesn't mean anything. They can go about their lives just as they are going to own their own homes for the rest of their lives. He also stated that he is a resident of Bradford Place. I would like to ask, can he and the members of this commission put that in writing and assume responsibility if that prediction doesn't come true? What about those of us who will sell our homes in the next two, five, 10 years and face additional depressed market value as a result of the expansion? Mr. Huddleston's statement appeared to me to be out of touch with the citizens of Murfreesboro. He states that he is a Bradford Place resident. My initial search of tax records does not show him as owning property in Bradford Place. Mr. Huddleston, if you're here tonight and you do own property in Bradford Place as a treasurer, I'd like to talk to you and make sure that you've paid your dues. Mr. Huddleston does not speak on behalf of Bradford Place residents. I do, however, speak on behalf of Bradford Place Community Association and its members, many of whom are here tonight. He states that he recalls only one time where one crash landed near homes on Dover Street. I propose that any crash in or near the airport has landed near homes. Further, if memory serves, a plane crashed into Bradford Place Burn just a few years back. Was it 2006, I think, maybe? And I'm almost finished. I have to flip the page. Mr. Huddleston, I have little faith in the statements made by you to the press. This is a shame, since as the chairman of the commission, your statements should be reputable. A plane that can seat 19 for MTSU rather than 12, seven additional seats, is hardly justification for impacting so many people. It would take decades, if ever, for MTSU to realize the savings of the cost of operating a larger plane, let alone the purchase, versus the cost of commercial flights for its ball players. I'm certain our investments in education can go for something better than larger planes for transporting sports teams. If MTSU is in support of the expansion, are the representatives here tonight? I would think that if it's for the purpose of MTSU, and they're asking for $5.2 million to be spent, that somebody would be here representing them. Mr. Gerke does not expect more from the university unless the demand for pilots increases. Then why would we ask for a $5.2 million expansion for someone who isn't going to increase the volume? Why alienate those of us who have planes flying over our houses? And while they may not be in direct line with the runway, they do circle over our I'm all for MTSU, education, and the benefits thereof. However, I am not accepting statements blindly in the name of education or referencing an institution of higher education simply to have the appearance of benefiting education by supporting the cause, nor am I for causing those in opposition to the expansion to have the appearance of not supporting our great university or higher education. Mr. Gerke projects only a slight initial increase in the volume in business flight operations. Please define initial and that timeframe.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. You need to wind it up.
I'm winding up. I'll be done in less than a minute. That's certainly not to say that there will never be an increase, which would come with all the undesired effects, again, pollution, noise, safety concerns, et cetera. Back in November, I asked Mr. Gerke if having the runway next to the ball fields was a safety concern. He stated he didn't think so. What about some of those heavy hitters out there? One field faces the runway directly. Are there no concerns for the children of Murfreesboro who use that field? What about loud noise and hearing loss? I wear hearing aids. What about the crashes on the runway? You must acknowledge that there have been more than a few. That's a little too close to home. Bottom line, the expansion is a request for the elite few. The good old boys' club who wants my airport is bigger than yours. Again, my name is Steve Murphy, and I oppose the expansion of the Murfreesboro Airport. I ask you, the planning commission, to hear our concerns tonight and vote unanimously against the expansion of the runway. For those who would like to sign the petition, I'll be waiting outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good comments, Mr. Murphy. Who'd like to be next? Mr. Murphy is representing the homeowners of Homewear Association of Bradford Place, so I allowed him to stay at the microphone a little bit longer on that, but please, keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Good evening. My name is Stan Golden. I live at 310 Falcon Drive in Murfreesboro. I've been a resident of Murfreesboro since 1969. I'm a former professor at MTSU. I recently retired from Nissan's America's Headquarters. I'm a former chairman of the Board of Main Street, Murfreesboro, a former member of the Lineball Library in Murfreesboro, a former member of the State Board of Examiners in Psychology, and I've served on a number of other boards here in the city. I reference these things only to affirm my interest and commitment to a better Murfreesboro, a better Rutherford County, and state of Tennessee. My home is located just a couple of blocks from the airport's runway protected zone. We built our house there in 1972, and over the years, my wife and I have chosen simply add to our house a couple of times instead of moving to a newer neighborhood, simply because we enjoy and value our location. About a year ago, when I first heard of the city's investigation of possibly expanding our airport, I met with the airport manager and wrote letters to several members of the Murfreesboro Airport Commission, the City Planning Commission, and the City Council expressing my concerns about expanding the airport runway. And I'm still concerned, both as a resident of Murfreesboro and as a resident of one of the neighborhoods that would be affected by the airport expansion. Presently, the airport traffic and noise are generally pretty manageable, though frankly speaking, there are days when my wife and I must stop our conversations as aircraft fly above our home and drown out our words. But we've accepted these noises because, in our opinion, it's good for Murfreesboro to have some airport capabilities. However, any increase in noise or frequency of these noises would become much less tolerable. Let me list my concerns briefly. The aircraft noise level frequently exceeds the level that interferes with normal conversation, especially during the takeoff phase of flying an airplane. As we know, MTSU students practice takeoff and landing procedures regularly, as they must, during their learning processes. So, again, my wife and I cope with these noise levels at their present loudness and frequency of occurrence in respect for the education of our young people. However, expanding the airport will no doubt increase the number of aircraft using the airport and the number of takeoffs and landings, therefore increasing the amount of noise in our neighborhood. The number of aircraft housed at the Murfreesboro Airport would be expected to increase, as referenced in the Daily News Journal article of January 31, 2012. So, it's clear that more aircraft will use the airport, even if just from the standpoint of those that are housed there, and that's just a part of the story. It's also likely that expanding the airport runway will increase the size of aircraft that can land there, and they will likely be noisier. The bottom line is that the amount of noise and frequency of noisy events will be expected to increase significantly if the airport runway is expanded. The safety aspects were minimized in a comment made by one of the members of the Murfreesboro Airport Commission and in this D and J article, January 31. And at this time, I'm not challenging the safety aspects so much as the noise and interference with the quality of daily living in our neighborhood. I believe the D and J article also says that MTSU's volume of student flight training isn't expected to increase unless the demand for pilots increases. So, it would seem that there isn't an immediate push to consider putting ourselves into this negative situation anyway. Another quote from the same D and J article stated, quotes, "The longer runway will benefit MTSU in particular by allowing the university to eventually," the emphasis is mine, "eventually replace its King Air 200 aircraft that seats 12 with a Jetstream 31 aircraft that seats 19," Gerke said, end of quote. So, what is the urgency? Surely, this potential eventuality would not justify the negative impact on so many others in our community. It's a definite indicator that Murfreesboro Airport officials do want to bring in larger aircraft, which, in my opinion, would create a big negative impact on the quality of life for residents anywhere near the airport. So, in the last section of my presentation, the question is, why does this matter? There are good residential neighborhoods near the airport. The stability of my neighborhood is an example. Many of the residents on our street are the original owners or second owners of their houses. This is over the course of 40-plus years. Although it isn't a ritzy neighborhood, we have a well-maintained and stable environment, a middle-class location that Murfreesboro should be proud of. If this airport expansion is allowed, our neighborhood will deteriorate. Murfreesboro doesn't need that, and certainly the residents in my neighborhood don't need that. Property values will also be negatively affected. The bottom line here is that the quality of our living environment will be negatively impacted by an airport expansion. And why? It's not likely that there will be any real significant improvement in the quality of life in Murfreesboro that would result from expansion of this runway. Very few residents of our city will benefit from this proposed airport expansion, and it's very unlikely that it will attract new industry. The D and J article said, quotes, "The airport manager projects that the longer runway will only lead to a slight initial increase in business flight operations."
Mr. Golden, thank you for your comment.
I'm coming to a conclusion now, and I have X-ed out a number of paragraphs in deference to the request from the chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
The fact that a significant amount of money has already been spent in order to prepare this proposal might imply that it's important to justify the cost of the work done so far by approving the recommendation. The tail, of course, would be wagging the dog. $100,000 were spent on an airport layout plan, and $82,000 were spent on an environmental assessment, though state and federal funds covered most of the costs of these studies. However, who pays for the federal and state expenditures? Could it be our citizens, you, and me? The rationale for continuing this project un- The rationale for continuing this project unfortunately may be this: If we already spent this much money, we should go ahead with the rest of the project. And that is very bad rationale. My last paragraph is simply this: "I ask you in good conscience to reconsider this dreadful erosion of good-quality neighborhoods located near the airport and walk away from the temptation of expanding the airport, which would actually have more damaging effects than good ones. At the very least, the advantages of expansion would be minimal, while the damages to the quality of life for residents would be significant." Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thanks very much, Mr. Golden. Who would like to be next?
My name is Mike Schleicher. I live at 706 Middleton Lane. That's in Bradford Place subdivision. My property backs up to the land that the Swanson Development people, you guys approved, a strip center, I believe a storage facility, two, three years ago. And sadly, the economy, I guess, has stopped that from happening. I know that many of the folks in my neighborhood really didn't want that approval, and, you know, it's your job to make those decisions, and you made that decision. There were a lot of folks in our neighborhood that really didn't like the idea of y'all expanding the road, but, you know, we have to progress, and Dejarnet got bigger, and we put more schools in, and we needed those more schools. But there was a lot of us that really didn't want the road expanded. There's a-- that was a decision y'all made, and I understand it. There were a lot of folks in our neighborhood who were very concerned about the traffic coming in and out of Bradford Place and North Woods, and I think we, as a community, have asked for, you know, a red light to protect folks coming in and out. And for whatever reason, our government has decided that that's not something that needs to happen. All I wanted to come here and say this evening, ladies and gentlemen, is I understand y'all have a burden of responsibility to make sure that our community is growing and growing safely and manage our growth. But I'd also like to say to you that, you know, someday, somebody's liable to want to put a strip center behind your house, your property, damage your property's values. Hopefully, you won't have someone wanting to put a runway that pretty much is lined up in your backyard. Literally, the runway as it stands now, you know, we have a small amount of traffic coming through the airport, but we hear every bit of it. If you bring larger planes in there, I'm sure we're going to hear a whole lot more of it, and, you know, many of the fears of the folks in my neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods about larger planes and larger noise hopefully won't be realized if, ladies and gentlemen, y'all make a decision to protect the quality of our neighborhoods. I don't know exactly why the whole idea of enlarging the length of our airport or the need to, you know, bring in bigger planes is there. I know we've got airports in Lebanon, we have them in Smyrna, we've got them in Nashville. I'm all for my city and my community and my county prospering, but I hate the thought of it, prospering on the backs of, you know, a whole lot of folks in our neighborhood that are paying very significant taxes. We love being members of the Murfreesboro community. We love being residents of Bradford County. But I got to tell you, decisions by our government and our government officials have really made us all worry. We hope y'all do the right thing, and you at least postpone this decision for, you know, a little bit more community outreach so other people can, you know, voice their concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schleicher. Who would like to be next?
Good evening. My name is Leanne Basil, and my address is 887 East Northville Boulevard, and I live in Carriage Park Condominiums. I own one. When I open up my front door, I look directly at the airport, and I love living there. My unit is one of the ones that will eventually be acquired because it is in the runway protection zone. I'm also a real estate agent. The future acquisition has been made public, and it's part of the FAA improvements to Murfreesboro Municipal Airport that will cover the next five, 10, and 20 years of service to our community. I also have a document from the airport manager, Mr. Gerke, that states, "The city's policy is to be in compliance with the FAA's recommendation to ultimately acquire those properties that are located within runway protection zone on a voluntary basis with federal, state, and local funds when they become available." I've been told that those funds are not currently available, and it may take several years for the funds to become available and an acquisition plan to be developed. There's not been any timetable given to any of us as far as when that's going to happen. As a homeowner and as a real estate agent, I have three concerns. The first is that anytime someone in the runway protection zone wants to list their home for sale, they will need to disclose to a potential buyer the future acquisition of their property. The second, that this could negatively affect the buyer's decision to purchase that property. And the third, that this will ultimately decrease property values in the zone and surrounding the zone. My question is, how should homeowners and the real estate agents handle this issue so to protect all the parties involved, the potential sale of the home, and the value of our property? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basil. Anybody else?
My name is Jameson Hattoli, and I live at 715 Middleton Lane. I'm the president of the Bradford Place Homewoman Association, and Steve did speak for us, but I had a couple of points that I'll keep brief. First, I want to clarify something that has been told to us about the height, the level of the planes that will be flying in. It's a statement that, although true, is very misleading. The way I've been-- it's been explained to me is that the planes will continue to fly in at the same altitude, and I don't doubt that that's true, that they will stay at the same height the entire time relative to the runway. But that position relative to our homes makes those planes at a lower altitude when they come by our neighborhood. It's simple seventh-grade geometry, but it's a misleading statement. Those planes will be closer to the homes. That will be compounded exponentially by the fact that they'll-- even small jets will be coming in and larger prop planes. The noise is significant. I live probably 300 yards from the flight path, and in my home with the television on, you do occasionally hear planes come in. That's not necessarily a problem. We've gotten used to that, but increased noise would be a problem. It would be a significant problem. The-- I have to say that the MTSU student pilots tend to do a great job of following the rules as I understand them. What I've been told is that pilots should not be flying directly over where we are and making a sharp cut into the runway. And the student pilots tend to always come in on a direct path to the runway. But that does not apply to the majority of the other planes that come in, and they come in around, looks like about 300 yards above the house tops as they make that bank into the runway. I feel that's dangerous. It's going to increase-- the danger's going to increase with larger planes and jets. Whether they're at a higher altitude or not, I mean, at the same altitude or not, they're still going to be closer to the rooftops relative to the end of the runway being the position of the end of the runway to the homes. And I don't understand why this is necessary when, according to Google Maps, 15.1 miles away from our airport is the Smyrna Airport. That's barely a drive. I don't see why-- how that can be justified when a facility is already available, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Chairman Lamb, Commissioners, my name is Danny O'Brien. I actually do not live in-- near the airport. My mother does. She lives on Lexington Trace, and she called me today and asked me to come to this meeting. I just want to bring up one point for your consideration, and her biggest concern herself. She has lived there, I think she built home in '92, and her price of her home is adjusted accordingly throughout the years. When you sell a home in Lexington Trace, you just-- it's obvious the airport's there, and the pricing is done based on that fact being there. The increase of the size of aircraft, including new jets now, will, without a doubt, after 37 years practicing real estate in Rutherford County, drastically affect the values of those homes. There's no question about it. Anybody in the business will know that. And I can't see, in everything I've read, enough merit to this to destroy the values of all those homes in those areas just to get another 100, 1,000 feet of an airstrip and allow larger planes to come in and out when, as they mentioned, you do have Smyrna. But my point is to bring up, there's no question in my mind whatsoever, after all this experience I've had, that home values will plummet when that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Donald McDonald. I live at 2104 Black Monroe. Looks like I'm in a minority tonight. And part of my property is in the city limits, so I guess I can speak to the city. I want to endorse and recommend the new airport proposal for the following reasons. Number one, a longer runway will naturally improve the safety aspect for future operations. Anyone who has flown or ridden in a small aircraft can appreciate this. The ultimate future expansion of the airport footprint will move the MTSU facility further north, creating less traffic in the terminal area, and will give MTSU their own fuel farm and expanded operating area. I am proud to be an avid supporter of the MTSU aerospace program. Sometimes we overlook the contribution to the town and the county that the 27,000 students bring financially. As you know, they contribute several million dollars per year in rent, food, clothing, fuel, and other services. Also, we should be proud of the MTSU aerospace program that it has enrollment of over 700 students. A large portion of these students train on the airport at one time or another. The aerospace program is one of the best, if not the best, quality-wise in the country. They have five concentrations with the possibility of another in the very near future. This summer, they held a collegiate light competition, flight competition here at the airport, and had flight schools representing all parts of the country. They have placed well in this competition in the past. This promotes Murfreesboro as a good place to work and live. The move north will give the airport room for future expansion to build more rental hangars, both private and corporate. After all, this is self, is a self-supporting airport. Do you get the emphasis of that? The city may furnish some money, but it'll be paid back, and has to generate revenues to furnish the necessary staff and maintain the facilities. The terminal or administration building was built in 1952. That's a long time ago, and, as you well know, and it hasn't changed since. Other airports in the area are modernizing, such as Major Runway and Taxway Extension in Galton, a new terminal building at Telahoma. And in the plan, movement of the fuel facilities for private and corporate planes will give more parking space and decongest the terminal building area. We here in Murfreesboro need to keep pace with our neighboring cities and the aviation progress in the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Who's next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council, for letting me speak. My name's Rebecca Stone. I live at 826 Bradford Place. My husband and two daughters and I moved here in 2006 deliberately choosing Murfreesboro over all of the country. My husband was in the U.S. Coast Guard, a flight surgeon, and also has his private pilot license, so we have a great love and passion for flying and a great love and passion for pilots. He's unable to be here tonight because he has a previous commitment as a volunteer in the city of Murfreesboro. I taught for two years after moving here in 2006 through 2008, and now I'm a volunteer educator in the city schools. I wanted to say that I appreciate the city's expansion on the street, Dejarnet, and the two beautiful schools that have been built, Oakland Middle School and Pittard. We are in opposition to the extension of the runway because of our concerns about noise, our concerns about safety, our concerns about property values, and our concerns about the smog. I grew up in L.A., so I use the term "smog." I know we don't see that much in middle Tennessee, but-- and so I just want to say that we love Murfreesboro. We could have chosen anywhere. We were stationed in Alaska prior to coming here. When we looked for a place to move when my husband was retiring, we chose Murfreesboro on purpose and hope to stay here. But we would like our home to retain its value. We would like our community. We've seen improvements in our neighborhood and in the neighborhoods all in that area, and so we have people here that, you know, we love our communities. And so my request would be that you deny or at least further investigate the extension of the runway. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Who would like to be next?
My name is Lou Peruzzi, and I live at 1512 St. Charles Place in Murfreesboro. I can remember going with my dad to take my brother for flying lessons over 50, 60 years ago in that airport, and I don't think it's changed that much since he was taking flying lessons as a teenager, and I was just a very small thing. And I'm concerned about the safety of the airport, and I don't see where, just because we add onto the runways to make it safer for the planes that are there now and that are coming and going, that all of a sudden we're going to be just having all these big, noisy airplanes just suddenly coming down on us. And I don't think it would make that big of a difference, and I really hope that you will consider adding on because I think it would improve the safety of the airport that we have now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peruzzi.
Ladies and gentlemen, I didn't have anything prepared tonight, but my name is Jim Gardner. I live at 1816 Harold Lane. I back up to the fence of the Murfreesboro City Airport. I also own the flight school, the private side, not MTSU. We teach the other people how to fly. The airport expansion, I'm not sure about the bigger airplanes that are going to come in, but I know I own seven airplanes at that school. I have 11 employees who fly out of that runway. The runway is pretty good the way it is, but giving an extra 1,000 feet would improve the safety of even the smaller aircraft tenfold. It will make the airport safer. Again, my name is Jim Gardner. I own Murfreesboro Aviation, the Flight School, and I just purchased my house, 1816 Harold Lane, because I am not afraid of it. I know about aviation. There's nothing wrong with this. Thank you very much, and I would like for you to approve it for the safety of all the people in Murfreesboro. It will not only, it will not only help the people who are pilots and students, it will also help everyone around. also help everyone around. And just so everybody here knows that this airport is self-funded and has no tax or city money from the city or the county. None of the money comes from the city or the county. No taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
My, my name is Barry Richardson. I live at Northbrook Court. Lived in Murfreesboro for forty-seven years. Have a degree in aerospace from MTSU. I have an airline transport pilot's license and sixty-five hundred hours. But I, I rise in opposition to this extension as well for all the same reasons that's been stated tonight: safety, property values, and all the other aspects that we said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Anybody else?
My name is Marcy Castleberry. I'm actually secretary of the Bradford Place Community Association. I live at seven-one Ford Judson Close. Just wanted to make one clarification about something that I learned today despite what the gentleman just said. I spoke today to a person who's flown in and out of Murfreesboro Airport a lot, has owned planes there, rented planes there, has lots of experience, and he, he notified me today that actually the, the runway as it is now is fine for what's coming in and out and in and out of there. And he, he, he really knows this is over a long period of time, and maybe it could be, maybe what the gentleman was meaning was for a student, maybe there's less, more room for error is what he's getting at, I'm not sure, but that was new information to me today. He was saying that for what is coming in and out of there now, the air, the length of the air, of the runway is absolutely fine. This expansion is definitely to bring in larger planes and jets and things. So we are definitely in opposed, in opposition to this for that reason, but I just want to make that clear to everyone that really the length of the, it needs resurfacing apparently, but the length of it is fine for what they have now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castleberry. Anybody else? Sure.
My name is Mark Hearn. I live at two-nineteen Peacock Avenue in Haynes Haven, just on the other side of two-thirty-one from all these folks at Bradford Place. I'm also opposed to the runway extension. I've been in the aviation industry for thirty years. I've seen this before. When you have a longer runway, it does allow for corporate-type jets to come in. They are noisy. It will decrease the value of the homes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
My name is Don Winningham. Appreciate you letting me speak tonight. I live at nine-oh-eight Spring Leaf Court, and I back up to the airport property. You guys have a tough decision. You always, you're having to balance interest here, and I know it's a, it's a hard decision. For twenty-four years between nineteen eighty and two thousand eleven, I worked near Metro Airport in Nashville. I saw them load houses on trucks and carry them away. I saw the destruction of the neighborhoods. I saw Metro have to buy houses from people. It's a, that, that neighborhood is completely destroyed. So I urge you to consider that. There've been people rise both in opposition and, and for this. I can tell you that six o'clock in the morning many days, there's a twin-engine plane that leaves that airport. It's very loud. Most of the traffic is fine, but when you start with the twin-engine planes, it increases the noise dramatically. So I, I appreciate the tough job that you have to do, but I'd ask that you vote against this.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Lori Cummins. I live at seven-oh-two Fenwick Close, and I'm a Realtor with Bob Parks. And first and foremost would be my property appreciation value, which, you know, Bob, you're, you're a Realtor as well. We don't want the, we don't want our home values going down anymore. We're currently already in a recession. I canvass Northwoods, North Springs, and much of Bradford Place today. Many people who cannot be here are in great opposition to this because our kids are playing out in the yards and already just the MTSU flight traffic is noisy. When you're outside and the MTSU flights are flying over, you can't, you might as well just not say anything. You cannot hear a word. And with larger jets, longer runways, it's just going to get worse, and we are adamantly opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cummins. Anybody else?
My name is Jim Williams and live at seven-fifty-three East Northfield and Carriage Park, and my wife and myself are concerned too about the extension of this runway and all. Appreciate you may look further into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Come round up, sir, if you're wanting to speak. Yes, sir.
I'm not prepared at all, but I'm like everybody else here, opposed to this except two, three guys.
Would you give your name, sir, and address?
Oh, sure. My name is Mario. My last name is Aguirre. I'm a Cuban refugee. What is going to tell you? Okay, I'm a retired engineer for thirty years. I know physics. I know that to fly a bigger airplane is going to take a lot more fuel. And you know what happens you, when you have a lot of fuel on an airplane and you hit a tower? It goes down. If an airplane full of gasoline or whatever they use, diesel, a truck in one of this neighborhood is going to take quite a few houses. When the planes are on the, in the air, they're safe. The only time they are dangerous is going up and coming down. And we are, since we are on the line to the airport for the landing, we are going to be exposed a lot. And that, and that's my concern, you know. Oh, by the way, you say they, they fly real high? No, I can see the faces of those people. And they may have very good instructors, but they're banking a lot over my house to the point sometimes, eh, they might fall down because they go slow. They turn the engine off, practicing again, and they turn it off again, on and off. It's dangerous, and I don't like it.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Gwendolyn Sheard, and I live at thirteen-oh-two Mulberry Court in the Northwoods subdivision. I'm opposed to the runway extension. A number of reasons, and you've heard that the property values will go down. The area is densely populated, so there are a lot of homeowners there. The natural extension of decreasing our home values is that the city's tax base is also decreased, and so the money that the city's going to get, so you may say that there's no city money involved, but the city's money will be involved because your tax base is decreased and the city's going to get less tax money. Though, if you're not going to bring in larger planes by adding this eleven-hundred feet to the runway, then why build it? We've heard that it's perfectly substantial for the planes that are in and out of there now, so there's no need. If, and if you don't need it, then don't spend the money. The larger airplanes, if you do, if it were extended, the larger airplanes that it would allow, will not only decrease our value, but they will, they shake your houses. We had planes in the area last night, and people will tell you that their homes were shaking because of that. And now just imagine that happening to us on a daily basis. It will not only destroy the value, but also it will damage our homes. So I'd certainly like to ask that you vote against the extension. I hear that we, that the airport needs to have some renovation done to it, and that's fine. There are some areas that I saw on the drawings that you had where there's some improvements that need to be made. Make those improvements, but you don't need to extend that runway. There's no need for it, and it's going to cause a lot more harm than good. We ask you to vote in opposition to the extension of the runway. Improve the airport, but do not extend that runway.
Thank you, Ms. Sheard. Would anybody else like to speak?
My name is Richard Omahundro, and I live at seven-five-five St. Andrews Drive, and I'm a flight instructor for MTSU. I happen to fly those aircraft several times a day, and in my personal experience, I do feel that the eleven-hundred-feet additional extension on the runway would increase safety quite a bit. I deal firsthand with those students, and for the aircraft that MTSU has, the runway length is legally sufficient. However, an additional safety buffer would be a very good idea. On several occasions, my students and I will tend to use up the entire runway, so the additional eleven-hundred feet would add to that buffer. I also wanted to make it aware to everybody that a larger turbojet-powered aircraft, one with, that's driven by a turbine, requires a one-thousand-five-hundred-foot pattern as opposed to the one-thousand-foot pattern that's required by propeller-driven aircrafts. So that is an additional safety buffer there. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I'm Steve Ayers, and I don't really live right on the airport, just sort of out by the landfill. I got bigger things to worry about besides the airport, but let's expand it too, man. It's just, I don't know. Why not? I just want to point out a couple of things I found out a while back that hadn't really heard brought up tonight. It does appear FAA, you think they do all the regulating. Actually, they do not. I had a direct conversation with them. They do not regulate the length of runway per size of aircraft. That's left up to the pilot and what their capabilities are. I was surprised to hear that, but that's, that's the case in the municipal airport. Now, of course, when you get to the international airports, all that becomes different, but in this classification of airport, FAA does not regulate that at all. The FAA or the city, neither one can regulate noise from the planes or jets since they receive federal money, and that limits their capability in what they can actually regulate. So if there is something noisy going on, I think we just have to put up with it, and I don't believe they're going to be able to do anything about it. I guess most importantly too, I want to, I must say this first, I'm certainly in favor of MTSU. I think everybody in here knows that, and they're all in favor of what MTSU wants to do. But when we get into our larger aircraft, we all know too, Smyrna's available. And, you know, if you're going to use Smyrna, I mean, they could go from their nineteen-seater all the way up to a DC-ten if they wanted to at Smyrna, so they could, you know, they have endless possibilities at Smyrna, which makes more sense. The other thing too is this five-thousand-foot seems to be a magic number, and per a conversation with corporate flight management in Smyrna and their operation, it seems to be an insurance requirement that a certain type of aircraft, which is those turboprops and Lear jets, things like that, do require a five-thousand-foot runway to meet insurance regulations. Here again, it has nothing to do with FAA, but it does in, to meet the insurance regulations. And per the management at corporate flight management, they cannot land per their insurance at Murfreesboro now, but once we expand to five-thousand feet, they will be able to land their entire fleet. And of course, if anyone's interested, they have fairly large aircraft they, they use down there at the Smyrna Airport, and they'll be able to land that here after we complete the five-thousand foot. So that sort of seems to be the magic number. And I'm sort of thinking, if we could compromise, you could lengthen it somewhat, but not to the five-thousand feet simply because that five-thousand feet sort of opens a floodgate. So there ought to be some way to compromise on that. So I thought I'd throw my tidbit in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Anybody else?
My name's Frederick Clayton, and I live over on Regency Park. I own a house in, in the Northwoods, and been flying into Murfreesboro now since nineteen sixty-eight. I haven't killed anybody yet. I haven't fallen on their houses, and I've still got an airplane out there. What I'm here to say is I've heard noises that airplanes have made and shaken the houses. What people don't realize, they keep talking about Smyrna. Smyrna three-two ILS comes right over Murfreesboro Airport, comes right over my house on Regency Park, and those C-130s will shake your house. So I think that should lay some of that noise to them, and there's other aircraft that would do make noise. The safety feature of adding this extra thousand feet or a thousand three or eight feet, whatever they're, to get to five thousand, will make the insurance for other aircraft of the same categories. We're not talking changing the category of aircraft that come in here, but they will be insured to come in here. They come in here now anyhow, not in any real large number, but a lot of them have to bypass our fuel docks there. Also, this airport is the gateway to Murfreesboro. Corporate, anybody wanting to get into any international or interstate corporate offices, production, or any kind of business expects an airport to be here and an airport that can serve their aircraft. So as an aerospace major, graduated in seventy-three from out here, one of the first, I do support this project to its fullest. It's not going to change the pattern, and the pattern will be the same as it was before. It will only extend to the north. The airplanes could come in a little bit lower if they wanted to in order to use that thousand feet that's to the north. So I implore you to do it. It will make things safer. You've heard, "Safety, safety, safety," and that's what this is about. It is also about the growth of MTSU. And I'm not prepared to speech. I may have rambled, but please do it. It is the right thing for the city. This airport's been here, and I said sixty-eight, I haven't heard anybody say they've been on that airport since sixty-eight, so, or built a house before then. So the airport's been there from time one, as far as most of us that have talked today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Okay, anybody else? Please come forward.
My name is Josh Yates. Live at three-fifty-four Dejarnet Lane. I can personally testify that the planes, the double the twin-prop engine that flies by my house that shakes it is not a C-30, whatever it is, because I actually visually see it fly by my house, and it does shake my house, and it is extremely loud. The next point I have is I do have a bit of concern of the, the biggest argument we have for the airport is that now the current airport is now dangerous because it's too short of a runway. Obviously, that brings up a concern, because now if it's now dangerous, the only option is to expand it at the expense of probably over four hundred homes and their home values. probably over 400 homes and their home values. To me, the next point wisdom would be if Murfreesboro has grown, actually, it's grown faster, I believe, than Smyrna, and Smyrna has had this airport, it would be wisdom to think that airports are naturally going to be a bane on the surrounding areas, especially high-density residential, playgrounds, elementary schools. It's actually at our benefit to let Smyrna keep bringing in the traffic because it's not much of a commute whatsoever. Those are just my quick points. I would appreciate y'all taking those into consideration. It will destroy, no one can argue that it will increase values or keep values the same on the residential homes. It will destroy it. And actually, I believe Murfreesboro supports MTSU extremely well currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Sean Dean. I live at 1815 Harold Lane. I live across the street from the houses that are in the zone that may be bought. And I just want to voice my position of any public funds of going through with the recommendation of acquiring any of the property on the south end of the runway. I don't, I don't think it's necessary, and I just think there's better things that public funds can, can be utilized for rather than buying perfectly good property in people's houses.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dean. Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Bennett. I live at 723 Middleton Lane. You folks have a lot on your plate in everything that you've heard here tonight. So I'd like to invite all of you over to my home. If you're trying to figure out the noise level, the iced tea is on me any day of the week. You can hear the difference between planes, trust me. When I sit in my den upstairs and I hear a plane, all I have to do is turn my eyes to that window, and I can see it taking off. But there are times that there is a jet or a prop or a helicopter that comes in, and you certainly can notice the difference, very much so. MTSU stays on their flight pattern. They do a very good job of it, and we're proud of that. But of course, the people that have taught many of these pilots that are around here, you will notice that you can be sitting in your backyard and you hear nothing, and suddenly they've been feathering that engine over your home, and suddenly it comes up, and you look up, and as the gentleman said, I can tell you what color hair they have. I can tell you probably if they have gold in their teeth, they're that low. So please, if you're doing your study, 723 Middleton, come on by because you can sit in the yard and you'll know the difference. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Last call. I'll close the public hearing, but your opportunity to speak will end. Would anybody else like to come forward? Okay. In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing portion of this meeting is closed. We will go into a discussion period now. Purpose of our discussion, we're going to take one of three courses of action tonight. We're either going to vote to recommend approval to the City Council. We're going to vote to recommend disapproval to the City Council, or we're going to defer it to further action. One of those three things is getting ready to happen. Regardless, you will have an opportunity to speak again at the City Council before any action is taken on this proposal. The City Council will conduct another public hearing, just like we have tonight, for the mayor and the City Council. So just letting you know that. This is not the end of the road for this proposal, not either way. Okay. Mr. Ayerlot, there was numerous questions and comments. You may want Mr. Gurke to come up or other airport representatives while you and him try to answer those or address some of those concerns.
Well, I do want his assistance and, or maybe some of his engineers to help me. But I heard a lot of comments, but I heard relatively few questions. But the first couple of speakers did ask some questions, and I think they're entitled to it. One of them had to do with will it result in large planes, and I think Mr. Gurke should answer that. But before he gets up here, I understood Mr. Abair to ask the question about why did we allow such high densities around the airport? And I think that's a legitimate question. The Murfreesboro Municipal Airport was constructed in the mid-1950s, sometime around 1956. The airport was way out, was outside the city. It started out in the middle of, out in the middle of cornfields. It was remote from the city. At that time, the city limits ended somewhere around, where, around Clark Boulevard. The city grew out in that area, good land, and it was a, a matter of having to basically balance property rights. The people who owned the property wanted to develop the property. During my tenure with the city, we've had discussions like, well, maybe we should have a light industrial use around the airport, around the airport lands, right where Spring subdivision, right there beside, between Northfield, oh, excuse me, Northwoods and the airport, discussions about storage developments there. Because storage developments are very low population, like commercial in those areas. But there was a, just a rejection of that idea from the people who lived in Northwoods. We don't want commercial beside Northwoods. We'd rather have more people when the issue came up. During my tenure, I had been very adamant that we should never allow multifamily, high-density apartments at the ends of the runways. And believe me, that issue comes up periodically, about every two or three years. Some of the owners come to talk to me about, can we get our properties owned for apartments right beside State Farm? It has no appeal for residential, single-family. And I tell them, no, that is probably the worst use that you could do. The idea of a storage development like the Swanses got, actually, that was a very good use from an airport's perspective, low-intensity commercial. As far as the other uses around the South Church, excuse me, Island 231, along Memorial Boulevard, those are commercial uses, relatively low densities. And they're not in line with the runway. Adams Place is not in line with the runway. There's nothing wrong with Adams Place being located there. I think that's a very appropriate use. Lexington Trace, I will submit to you, it does seem to crowd it. And in hindsight, I was not present when that was determined to be approved. I think in hindsight, I think that the city's planning department would rather not see that type of use, sir. But as far as allowing, I think it's part of the way communities evolve. Property owners do have rights. And bear in mind, RS-15 is what, Northwoods, and a lot of that area out there is zoned, RS-10, RS-12, excuse me, RS-15, RS-12. And that's a similar density that's what's permitted county-wide in Rutherford County. Rutherford County is zoned to R-15 all over it. So it's a similar density that's permitted all over this county. So if I come across as defensive, I don't intend to. I want to come across as knowledgeable. I've watched a lot of that development there. Now, Mr. Gurke, tell us a little bit about the, some of the questions that were asked, if you would, come to the microphone, about the, some of the things that are included in your study, and maybe elaborate on some of the issues about the why this is proposed, some of the technical information that supported the program.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Ayerlot. With me is Tim Haskell, who is the chief planner involved in the, in this airport layout plan. And there was much collection of data beforehand of our aircraft that are currently operating in and out of the airport. And a justification, a purpose and need study was conducted. Anytime you put a drop of ink on an airport layout plan, there has to be some justification, some purpose and need for that, for that representation on the airport layout plan. So I'll ask Tim to get more specific on the justification.
Good evening. The, the purpose of the airport layout plan is for the sponsor of the airport, in this case, the city of Murfreesboro, to lay out on a piece of paper the ultimate development of the airport and to show the Federal Aviation Administration that the proposal meets their standard. It does not in and of itself justify the construction of a project. That is a, that is a different category. In this particular case, when we initiated the study in 2008, and it's important to understand, the study was initiated in 2008. We are now four years into it. So when we talk about a five-to-10-year plan, we're in the fourth year. So if a recommendation is made, for example, of a runway extension, we were looking at that runway extension originally as in the five-to-10-year plan. Because we're in the fourth year, it's getting, it's getting closer and closer to that process. The Federal Aviation Administration categorizes aircraft based on, based on wingspan and approach speed. Those airplanes fit into specific categories. The ultimate development of this airport does not change the category of need. The category of aircraft doesn't change. Yes, a 5,000-foot runway would allow the, the airplanes that meet the maximum extent of the category that Chad refers to, category we refer to as B-2. It, it allows those airplanes to come in. It allows those airplanes that are currently operating at the airport to operate in a safer manner and to operate at their full efficiency. But it does not change, the next category up is a, is a C-category aircraft. It does not change the geometry of the runway to allow those airplanes to operate into and out of the airport. I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you have.
I think in layman's terms, what a lot of people would like to know is by increasing the length of the runway by another 1,000 feet, or 11,000 feet, according to Mr. Gurke, will that allow a proliferation of the size of aircraft coming into the airport?
One of the things the airport does not do and cannot do is establish a capacity limit. The demand for aircraft into this community is a community issue. It's not necessarily a runway length issue. A particular airplane, for example, the airplane that MTSU operates, the King Air, there are King Airs operated by corporate flight departments all over the country that fly into this airport. On a hot day, they won't fill the airplane with people or fuel because of the length of the runway. The weight that that airplane carries at any airport, when it leaves the airport, is dependent upon the runway length. Whether or not they come into that airport is whether, whether or not the geometry of the airport fits their aircraft or whether the insurance company, the insurance carrier that they have, allows them to use a certain airport. Some operators of King Airs, some operators of Cessna citations, a turbofan airplane that currently operates at the airport, some of those insurers require 5,000 feet. Others do not. So the virtue of adding 1,102 feet of runway will, in fact, allow more operators of those type airplanes to come into the airport. Quantifying what that demand is in the community, we, we simply can't, we simply can't do that. But there is, we, we effectively know from our research and from discussions that the, the airport management has, for example, that people don't fly in this morning to come to Murfreesboro. They fly into Murfreesboro. They make the aircraft that they're using fit the airplane, the airport that they're going into. It is true that it, it will allow more aircraft. Whether or not there's a demand for that aircraft, we have not quantified that.
The residential structures that are affected by the runway protection zone, does the adoption of this master plan increase that size to put these houses in there, or are they already in there?
Those, those houses are already in the runway protection zone. The end of the runway that defines that runway protection zone is not changing. This particular plan does not change the city's policy. The airport layout plan that is currently on file recommends and identifies those properties to be acquired.
So regardless of the action on this proposal, those houses are unaffected?
That's correct.
Ms. Jones?
So how long would those houses have been in this airport protection district?
The, the runway protection zone that we are, that we're talking about on the south side, a curious thing happened in the mid-'80s. I know Joseph probably knows the specific year. But simultaneous, within the same period of time that those houses were being approved by the planning commission, the Federal Aviation Administration changed their criteria and defined what a runway protection zone was. Those properties were built up at the same time that the runway protection zone was coming into effect. That's why those houses are in that particular zone. The FAA carries a policy that within the runway protection zone, they have a required, defined land use plan that they want implemented if you alter that runway end. That runway, the south end of the runway in this, in this airport layout plan does not change. Therefore, it was our recommendation to the city not to change the current policy of acquiring those properties, to keep that policy in place, but not to immediately implement that policy because that particular runway end is not changing.
But basically, the houses were built at the same time or thereabout, and so anybody that's ever purchased one of those houses, it's always been in this protected zone?
The house has always been in the runway protection zone, yes. It was the adoption of the most recent airport layout plan that the term "to be acquired" was added to that plan. I believe, Chad, that that, that plan went into effect, it was either '94 or '97. I apologize. I can't remember.
Chairman Lam, I have two questions.
Mr. Shalburn.
There were several questions brought up with respects to closer to rooftops and then also specific to noise of large airplanes. I think you've already addressed that the category B-2 would not change. But I think, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I think you also said that there could be different types of aircraft that could come in, that what are coming in now, basically because of their insurer allowing them to come in, having this 5,000-foot runway. So my question to you is, would the planes that are pushing the B-2 category envelope be any louder or any noisier than the ones that are currently coming into the airport?
No. A, for example, a Jetstream 31 is powered by a similar engine. It's a turboprop, turbine engine turning a propeller. Jetstream 31 and the King Air have essentially the same noise footprint. A Cessna Citation III as opposed to a Cessna Citation II is essentially the same engine power plant. The noise footprint of those airplanes, when we, when an airport does or conducts a noise evaluation, and the noise, those airplanes are interchangeable in the noise model that's run. So that, no, there is not a substantial change in noise footprint of the individual aircraft operating at the airport.
Can you address the issue with respects to, and I'm not a mathematician here, but the, the issue that's been brought up of the, because of the length of the runway being increased and the planes being closer to rooftops?
Well, there's good news and bad news, like most programs. Residents on the south end of the airport will see no change on arriving aircraft. They will see rather substantial improvement in the height or elevation of the aircraft as it leaves the airport. Departures going south will be substantially higher because they start their takeoff roll 1,100 feet further north. Residents who live north of the airport, departures will not change in altitude because the start of takeoff roll for north departures does not change. Where residents may notice a difference, and I say may... Where residents may notice a difference, and I say "may" because, again, it's perception. Typically, a typical visual pattern onto a runway, the pilot makes the final turn, what we call base to final, for that last straight-in portion of the flight, somewhere between three-quarters of a mile and a mile out. At that point, the airplane has an elevation of about 350 feet. That turn will be made 1,100 feet further north. The elevation of the aircraft at that point, moving further north, will remain essentially the same, 350, 375 feet. Because they are aiming for a point 1,100 feet further north, the aircraft altitude within that last mile will be about 15% to 20% lower. They will be in the approach category, which means less power coming in. But again, one of the things that makes the approach a noise issue is because of the consistency of the operation. Most residents of Murfreesboro see airplanes all the time, various times of the day, but everyone has a different characteristic because of the elevation and speed. But when you live near an approach, it's the consistency flying that straight line because they have a specific aiming point. Again, airplanes will be 15% to 20% lower for the residents north of the airport along that centerline.
Chairman Lam, I have one more question. I think it's more towards Mr. Gerke. Chad, there was a question that was brought up, and I think is, in my mind, is a legitimate question for this board to consider as a decision-making process of, okay, we realize that we are going to impact the homeowners that are around this area, but from a bigger picture standpoint, what is going to be, has anybody put together an economic impact study if this 1,000 feet is added? And it sounds like there's no question that there could be additional activity. How would that impact the city of Murfreesboro? What are the positive aspects that would come from that additional 1,000 feet and the planes that would be coming into the city of Murfreesboro?
Thank you for that question. In the, what I've observed out there as the airport manager is that as Murfreesboro has grown, and we've seen the companies that are from all over the country, the name-brand restaurants, manufacturers and all that, they are coming in in business aircraft. And as the Murfreesboro has grown, as we've seen more and more of those companies come in, we've seen that type of activity, the business activity, come in. Some of them are small twin-engine four-seaters. Some of them are the King Air, like we see that are typical business-style aircraft. And that has had a significant impact on our community here, our quality of life and so on. And as an asset to the community, this is where the airport can be of assistance to the economic viability of this community.
Anything else, Mr. Halderson?
No. You know, I wish that, and this is probably not part of the process, but again, in my mind, it would be helpful to know, you know, what does that mean?
In some FAA program, projects, an economic study is required. In this case, for this, for General Aviation Airport, for these types of projects, none is required.
Okay. Mr. Gilli.
Couple of things, Chairman Lam. Chad, I believe it's Mr. Ayers that brought up the issue of if what we're doing this for is because of safety of the aircraft that currently come in, pilots and training pilots, as opposed to 1,102 feet and making that number the 5,000, using, is there any benefit to an expansion shorter than that that provides a safety factor but also allays the fear of different types of craft coming in that are more suited toward that 5,000-foot runway? Does this make sense?
All right, yes, it does. And the aircraft that, in our study, and looking at the insurance requirements, the 5,000 was a critical number to some of the customers that we talked to. So that was the mark. We looked at the land available, what would that mean to the runway protection zone, the different dimensions of the airport, and everything fit.
And I think the other thing is, I think, I would feel more comfortable, too, if we had an economic impact study than to see how this actually affects that aspect of things.
And we can address the safety also. Mr. Huddleston, I'd like to address the safety issue.
George Huddleston, Chairman of the Murfreesboro Airport Commission. Thank you all for your volunteer time. We too are a volunteer board and just trying to do the best we can for our city. 814 Templeton, by the way. One of the, Tim, I appreciate, Tim, for, that was one of the things that I wanted to make sure you all understood, was that the departures are when we're making noise with airplanes. I've been based there since 1979, flying a Cessna 421, and I've never had an engine failure. So it's not been a safety problem with having, originally it was 3,700 feet, and we extended 200 feet, decade and a half ago, maybe two decades ago. The issue with accelerate-stop distance, I want to make sure you understand from a pilot's perspective, accelerate-stop distance is the distance that it takes a twin-engine airplane to accelerate from a dead stop at the end of the runway. And all airplanes that the runway are always, wherever the runway is, they're going to always start it at the end because runway behind them is eroded safety. So as they accelerate at full power until the point at which they can rotate, and a twin-engine airplane has to reach blue line at which it can most efficiently climb, and at that instant, if it loses an engine, then they have to kill power on their good engine and come to a stop as quickly as you can. That is the accelerate-stop distance. At Murfreesboro Airport, the Navajos that are there, the 421s that are there, a lot of those airplanes do not have accelerate-stop distance on a hot day. Somewhere around 80 degrees is the particular aircraft that I fly. If it's at full gross weight and it's above 80 degrees, and at that critical point, an engine fails, then that aircraft is going to not stop on asphalt, it's going to be off in the grass where it stops. So that's the safety issue that we don't see because the engine reliability is incredible in today's airplanes. The noise thing that Tim already addressed is it's not going to do anything but help noise. I worked the accident in 2000 when the airplane went down on Dover, and in that particular case, they believed it was carburetor ice, but it was July, and by the time they could get the MTSB here, obviously any ice in the carburetor had already melted. I don't know, I did not measure where 1,100 feet further north would have put that particular incident, but he was taking off to the south, experienced a rough running engine, and turned to try to make it back to the runway, and that was what happened in that case. And that's the only incident since I've been flying that I know of on the airport or in the neighborhood where any of the neighbors were in any way damaged. We did a research some years ago over at the MTSU facility, and we were talking about where does the skill of student pilots affect safety? And basically, we found it's very parallel to cars. Student drivers and student pilots make decisions in skill that sometimes cause fender benders. But just like in a car, that student that drinks and drives, or that driver that makes big decisions in his judgment, those are the ones that cause fatalities. So we really feel very comfortable that our flying students, and we are 60% MTSU operations at the airport, we're really comfortable that those students, they might skid a tire, they might do some things that run into a hanger, but they don't do the things that cause fatalities. I remember a fatality that an airplane left Murfreesboro and iced up. The pilot made a really bad judgment decision and went down and out in Las Casas in the '80s. And that's the kind of decision that was not a skill decision but a judgment decision that causes the things that make the news headlines. So I just wanted to make sure that the safety issue and accelerate-stop was understood. And I can understand a lot of these neighbors. A lot of them got a red letter that didn't have a signature on it, and they didn't know if the sky was falling or not. I don't question why they're here. They're here because they're trying to understand and learn more. We did a lot of, Chad can address all of the public notices that we put out when we were having the initial public hearing with this, and we had it here in this same location. So we tried to do all we can. We didn't put notices in every mailbox. We put signs in neighborhoods, and I think we published in the newspaper and did all we could to get the word out, and we've tried that consistently throughout.
Mr. Young.
Mr. Huddleston, what determines the direction of takeoff, north versus south?
The prevailing wind, Mr. Young, is that, and we do have a policy at Murfreesboro that the zero-wind runway is the north runway, which means all the departures in a calm wind, it's our policy, but like Mr. Tim Haskell said, we can't enforce it every time, all the time, but it's the policy and it's the general practice that in calm winds, the airplanes take off to the north. Otherwise, they land and take off into the wind, whichever the prevailing wind requires at that time. And it changes sometimes when there's thunderstorms brewing, it can literally change in 30 minutes.
Mr. Huddleston, under the current length of the runway, are we capable of receiving Gulfstreams?
I don't think so. I don't think that even the 5,000 would let a Gulfstream base here. Now whether or not something comes in, I remember as a kid seeing a C-130 land at that runway, but I haven't since.
Yeah, I remember 727 landed at it.
So even with the expansion, we wouldn't be able to receive a Gulfstream?
This would be the same length that we all see at Shabaval, and Shabaval has been, it might even be longer than 5,000 in their recent additions, but we see, I travel past the Shabaval Airport frequently, and we don't see jet traffic coming in and out of Shabaval outside of the horse show time. The other 50 weeks a year, we just don't see that.
Mr. Huddleston.
Is there any economic impact that we've seen from corporate business trying to come to Murfreesboro that have bypassed us and went to Smart? Is there a number that you guys may have?
And in my conversations with corporate pilots, they have to walk through the door, they don't fly in. Unfortunately, because we're less than 4,000 feet, on many of their navigational equipment, Murfreesboro doesn't show up on the map. So their thought is, we're coming into Murfreesboro, if you had 5,000, that would be the key to us being able to come in. We did have one interstate warehouse that made it their policy not to come in, anything less than 5,000, and they were at one time coming in with a 421 and a small Citation, and they made that their policy.
Any other questions from the planning commission? Mr. Adlitt, do you have anything to add?
No, sir. Well, yes, sir. I want to fine-tune what you're saying about what action you're taking. This is not a rezoning. This is not a site plan, this is not a subdivision plan. This is a master plan, a comprehensive plan, if you will. Your authority is a little bit different than what it would be worth, let's say, rezoning or an annexation. With those you study and make a recommendation, with the comprehensive plan, you take action, and that is based under state law. Our local ordinance would require that the city council also conduct a public hearing after the planning commission has taken action, and also take action. That's our own local zone ordinance. This provision in our own zone ordinance, this would be all the way up to the planning commission. So the action you take is not really a recommendation, it's the action that you take. You may approve it, you may deny it, you may defer action. And with the deferral, I would expect that you'd want some additional study, and it would be a very appropriate thing to maybe detail what action you would want, or additional study you would want to be done if you were to defer action. I think we should defer it for a reasonable period if you were to defer action, instead of just defer indefinitely. Or at least have a status report come back to you later on after they've conferred to find out how long it would take to do the things that you might be asking. So I wanted to fine-tune what action you'll be taking tonight.
Sure. But regardless of our action, it still has to go to the city council.
Under our local ordinance, in order for it to become approved, it would also require a public hearing by the council and adoption by the council.
If there's no other questions, we're ready for a motion of some sort, what are the wishes of this commission?
Mr. Lam, I would like to suggest that we defer this to a time sufficient so that we can actually have an economic study, impact study, performed to see how this is really going to affect the community, and also as part of that, some sort of projection of the additional number of flights and types of planes that will end up coming in based on those insurance qualification changes. I think that we owe it to the neighbors for them to have at least some of those projections and for the community to know before we do this, if we do this, the economic impact it could have or could not have on our community.
Mr. Lam, I'd like to add to that. This is kind of vague, Mr. Gerke, but somewhere somebody across America has done this very similarly, added 1,000 feet to a runway. Is there any kind of data you can check, a methodology, to see if there is a dubious number that might be into property values that would help us understand? Because property values can be affected by a lot of different things, and it's important for us to know that, if that information is available. And I understand it may not be available in a study, but I think it's important to know that.
I would concur with that. I think that's very important. I think that's something, an obligation that we have to get at.
We'll just make that part of your motion.
I would.
Mr. Gilli, I think your motion is well warranted based on the concerns that have been expressed here tonight. All that being said, if you're ready to put that as a motion, we'll proceed.
I would move at this time that we defer action until such time as an economic impact study can be performed, which would also include projections of the additional number of flights and types of aircraft coming in under the new insurance regulations that would come into effect with the expansion, and to include Mr. Young's suggestion that any data that can be accumulated as to other cities that have done this, been faced with this, as to how it's affected property values in the surrounding areas.
Before I ask for a second, legal counsel, do we, and Mr. Adlitt, are we bound by any timeframe here on having to get this done?
None that I'm aware of.
I'm not aware of any statutory or zoning ordinance timeframe on this.
Let's ask it this way, then, Mr. Lam. Mr. Gerke, and I hate to put you on the spot, Chad, and the engineers working, what type of timeframe do you think it would take to come up with this data for us to be able to review? Just so the neighbors know what kind of time window that we're looking at to look at this again.
Give me one minute.
Sure.
We're expecting around 60 days that we could look at an economic impact study.
And would they give you time to include the additional information?
Yes.
Let's set it at 90 days, just to give that cushion, to make sure that we have all we need.
Within 90 days.
Within 90 days, not to exceed 90 days.
Are you adding that to your motion, sir?
I am.
Okay. Motion is made, yes, sir.
Mr. Gilli, if I may, if there's data that they can't get within 90 days, but they're close, can they, can we, is there some leeway in there on that?
Well, I think we could review whatever they bring before us.
If we could take additional action.
Well, excuse me, we can take either a status report or a report at that time.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll take about a five-minute recess while the folks that need to leave go ahead. If you have discussions, please take your discussions out. If you have discussions, please take your discussions outside to the lobby area so we can proceed with our meeting. Okay, we will go ahead and reconvene the meeting, moving on to the second public hearing for the evening. That would be a zoning change request to rezone approximately 20.36 acres located in GDO 1 along Robert Rose Drive from RS 15, which is approximately 10.38 acres, and Office General, which is approximately 9.98 acres, to a PUD and to remain in the GDO 1 area. Mr. Alan Thompson, on behalf of Lifestyle Communities, is the applicant. Mr. Adelot.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. The subject property is located along the north, actually just north of Medical Center Parkway, along the east side of Robert Rose Drive, as it has been extended. I think most of you are familiar with Robert Rose Drive being extended. It's not been opened up. It's been barricaded. But the street has been constructed to curbs and gutters with asphalt. Back in about 2008, the planning commission actually considered a little bit of a master plan. It was more of a planning level document for the purpose of deciding the alignment of the street. It was not a rezoning, but as part of that, they foot printed buildings to show how it could be used if it were to be a multifamily complex, or for that matter, an office complex. Look at the dimensions and the access. That was a planned level document, and you may have seen a copy of it in the program book that the applicants have put together. The property is being requested to be zoned PUD. It's proposed to be zoned PUD for a couple of reasons. One reason is the applicants know what they want to do. They have a very clear idea of what it is, and if they're approved, they will be ready to undertake the implementation of the plan. This plan, in some respects, varies from what could be done if the property were zoned to a traditional classification such as RM 16. For instance, it's closer to the street than would be permissible. In some small respects, it deviates from the GDO regulations in the sense that some of the setbacks between parking areas and some of the buildings is a little bit closer. Notice that this is captioned as an urban-type development, and to have the ambiance and the feel that they're trying to get, some of that would need to be varied. The gateway standard is often more of a suburban type of standard. The applicants have asked that they be permitted to use some siding material on the backs of some of the buildings. This project is also proposed to be zoned as a PUD because it would include a pub, which would be a restaurant-type use, that would serve alcohol, that would be open to the general public. It would be managed as a separate entity from the rest of the development. So it would be a combination of commercial and residential, which requires it to be classified as a PUD. It would not have been practical to create, to zone this as a PCD for the pub by itself and the remainder to be PRD. It's almost intertwined into it the way the building would be done. Including in your program book are some exhibits that show what the architecture would look like. I think it's very impressive what we've seen for the most part. Mr. Alan Thompson is going to be here. He's got a presentation he has with him, Mr. Chase Miller and Mr. Randy Caldwell. Mr. Miller is with the Lifestyle Development, and Mr. Caldwell is one of Mr. Thompson's colleagues with Reagan Smith and Associates. We will need to conduct a public hearing after the presentation and gain public input. Then we'll need to formulate a recommendation to the council. As a planned development, you can either approve it, you can disapprove it, you can approve it with conditions, you can defer action for them to work on significant elements that you think need to be improved before you make your recommendation. So with that, Chairman Lamb, I will turn it back over to you.
Mr. Thompson, I guess you're going to take the lead on this.
Yes, sir. Good evening, commission. Good evening, Chairman Lamb. Alan Thompson with Reagan Smith and Associates here on behalf of Lifestyle Communities, as Joseph has already briefed you. And what I'd like to do is run through a PowerPoint and touch on some aspects of this project. What you're looking at here is really the character that we're trying to capture with this development. And this is a very unique development, and I'm going to get into the character that we're trying to relate here as we go through the process. But first, I want to take a look at the zoning in general. And as mentioned before by Mr. Adelot, this is the master plan that we looked at back in 2008. And one point I'd like to make is this master plan was also cohesive with the overall land use plan that we looked at for the GDO and the Gateway District. So it mimicked a lot of those uses that were mentioned in that original master plan. And what you'll see, to the side, Medical Center Boulevard runs to the south of the project. This is Gatton property, approximately 117 acres. What you'll see is Class A office towards Medical Center Boulevard, and then you'll see an orange-type building just on the other side of Robert Rose. And that is a multifamily. And the reason I wanted to point those out is that's kind of a transition. You go from retail of the avenues to a Class A office, to a residential, a large open space, to the existing single-family residential. So it's a transition from a planning aspect. So just wanted to reinforce that that is a positive planning for these uses. The plan itself that you're looking at here mixes Class A office, which is seen as the blue buildings, commercial down right on the corner of Robert Rose and Medical Center Boulevard, the multifamily residential that I spoke to earlier, and then up to the very top is, you know, possible, you know, assisted medical-type facility as well. Again, this is long-range planning. This is the master plan that we put together in order to establish the infrastructure for this property and improve it to make it appropriate for future development. Now here we are today. You see the Gateway and the Conference Center all in place. Here's the Gatton property. The infrastructure of Robert Rose and Willow Drive is in place. The red outline is where we would be looking at our particular project, and that's the multifamily use, same as that proposed in our plan previous. And then this is our proposed layout. And we feel like it's very appropriate for this use. We feel like it transitioned to the existing neighborhoods, both to the north and to the east of us, and we feel like there's substantial buffer between us as well. This is the layout itself. Just looking at the technical side of this layout, there's about 1,200 linear feet along Robert Rose. There's total of 20.36 acres for the site itself. We're proposing 128 single-bedroom units, 275 double-bedroom units, for a total of 403 units. Did want to point out the bedroom sizes, mainly because this caters to a younger demographic, that more of that young professional or that MTSU graduate. So just something I wanted to point out from that standpoint. This comes to an overall density of roughly 19.8 units per acre. What was shown in the master plan previous was approximately 29 units per acre. So we're coming in well what was originally proposed in that master plan. Now I want to talk a little bit about the character of the development. This is a multifamily project. It is rental. However, it's very unique. It's done in a TND-style, traditional neighborhood design. That's a very urban present, presence that it will set here in the Gateway. What that means is the face of the buildings will face out towards the public realm, the public right of way on Robert Rose and the streetscapes that we are showing within our development. You'll see the tree-lined streets that run through that development. Also, what it means is the rear portion of these units is more utilitarian in nature. That's where you gain your parking. That's where your meter banks would be. That's where your AC units would be. Basically, taking them out from that street front point of view. And why are we doing that? Well, in this particular development, the street front is the lifestyle. That is the character we're trying to create. And so you'll see a little bit here, you know, what's important in this character that we're talking about. Well, the streetscape includes street trees. Well, that's very common on most streets. But then you have sidewalks lining each street. But what's also very important is the architectural or the street walls that back that streetscape. And why is that important? Because that creates that outdoor room. And so as you look at it, these are the avenues, these are the pedestrian routes that go through our development. And I'll talk about later the two main amenity centers that will become destination points. But what I would argue is that these pedestrian routes in themselves is an amenity. Because of the character of the architecture that I'm getting ready to show you, that travel from point A to B, to your passive park, to your active park, that's part of the experience. That's part of the lifestyle. This is the architectural character. So as you walk along these street tree-lined streets, this is the character you're going to be walking along. You're going to have that urban feel. You're going to have that townhome quality. You're going to have different roof heights, as you see here. Why is that important? Because that creates variety. That creates character. And then the corner units themselves, a little bit different architecture. So as you round the corner, more variety, more character. One thing I would like to point out, this is the front of the, excuse me, front of the townhome units that we're looking at here, and we'll look at the other architecture of some of the other units. The townhome units, the three stories that you're seeing there, are two-bedroom units. They have garages underneath on the first floor. The lower townhomes right next to them are two-bedroom units. And then the corner units are two-bedroom flats, one stacked on top of another. This creates a different type product and lends open to different renters. This is the rear of those townhomes, and I wanted to point this out because there's a lot of character that you'll see there as well. However, this is mainly meant for, this is where I park the car, this is where I bring in the groceries. It's more utilitarian in nature. However, you still see character in the windows, the railing, and the garage ports. Again, breaking up into the individual units, this is your three-story townhome, your two-story, and your corner units. Another one I'd like to touch on is the graystone units. These are the larger buildings that you'll see on the plan. There's 24 units per plan. So you think, well, this is like your standard multifamily building. Well, that's not the case. These are unique in nature as well. They are stacked flats. You have single bedrooms on the center portions of these. You have double bedrooms on the outside. But the unit itself goes all the way from the back of the building to the front of the building. So it's unique from that aspect. And what you're looking at here is the front, and the architecture is still being developed by Lifestyle Communities. And I would like to point out that they're developing an entirely new type architectural palette to fit this particular area and to create this ambiance along the streetscape. What I'm about to show you, this is a rear elevation of those buildings. So you can see here where you basically have the brick course along the bottom, flaring up along the tops at the breezeways. So you're going to have character even at the rear portions of these graystone units. All right. Now, just to touch on the amenity areas, we have two main amenity areas, or what I'd like to call destination points, because the entire development itself is very active. It's very social in nature and meant to be exactly that. The first one I want to focus on is in the upper left-hand corner, and that is the Turbine Park. This is a passive park. Why is it called a turbine park? Turbine Park is a, basically a term that tells all those streets that go by that park, none of them drive directly by. They all terminate on the units at the end of each street. Why is that important? From a pedestrian perspective, that creates character. It creates that outdoor room. It creates a unique essence to that park from a passive standpoint. This is where you go to read the paper. This is where you go to play frisbee with the dog. So that's our first destination point. The second destination point I wanted to look at is the amenity center. The amenity center is about 280 feet by 188 feet. So it's almost a football field in size or a little bit larger. And that's just looking at the amenity center itself. There is a 2,600-foot office. This would give you an example of what that amenity center would look like. It would involve, include a 2,600-foot office, but also a 3,600-foot fitness center, all being programmed as part of this community. On top of that office and on top of that fitness center, we would see two more stories of, sorry, residential flats, approximately eight units per floor. So you're looking at roughly another 16 units. Again, this is the mixed use worked into that amenity center and worked into the entire community. Those would all be single-bedroom units. Back to the amenity center itself, this, there's multiple interactions here from an active standpoint. They have professional-style volleyball courts, which promotes activity through the development, as well as a substantial-sized swimming pool area that caters to, you know, all the residents here within the community. The fitness center, also a key element, again, catering to the residents here in the community and the proposed community. Now this is something I want to touch on. Also, part of that amenity center is Joseph Adelot has brought to your attention why this is a PUD. There's also a pub involved. This is a very social area that promotes intermixing of the residents, but is also open to the general public. This is a 4,800-square-foot pub and would provide the appropriate services that most pubs would provide in any other aspect. There's also Wi-Fi lounge and other characteristics like that. This is basically getting back to the layout and talking in general about this development. We feel like we've, we've got a special thing here. I haven't seen anything like this in the middle Tennessee area for this type of market. And I think it's got an exceptional quality to it that would add a lot of value to that at the Gateway. With that said, we'd be happy to answer any questions, post the public hearing or whenever you'd like to post those. And both I and representatives from Lifestyle Communities will be here. Thanks.
Any questions of Mr. Thompson before we open the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
So again, I'll open the public hearing, ask you to come forward to speak if you'd like to speak, give your name. I'll hold your comments to no more than three minutes if at all possible, and we'll try to answer any questions you may have at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Nobody? Okay. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Lam, before we get too much further and before we begin your discussion, on behalf of the Mr. and Ms. Smithson, I'd like to maybe address some drainage. Mr. and Ms. Smithson reside off of Van Cleve Lane, and they back up to this property, actually to the property that this is coming out of. We've called this the Alexander property in the past. It's also part of the property that Mr. Gatton owns. It's an area that has historically had drainage problems. They do, in fact, have a drainage problem on the property. They did meet with us, and they showed us the nature of it. We had a very good discussion. And I think that they probably sent another email out, and they indicated that they felt better and that we'd listened, and we have listened. Their drainage problem is affected by a couple of different things. Number one, they're not getting water into their house above their floor, but they're getting water under the house on infrequent occasions. In May of 2000, you had a big flood in 2010, they got water under their house, and it was very distressing to them. But on your average rain, they don't get water under their house. Occasionally, they get water into, or infrequently, excuse me, they get water into a garage structure that's in the back of the property. And they know that. They knew it when they built it. They knew it was low. In fact, they've got it basically flood-proofed, so it doesn't have a lot of problems. It's still a nuisance. It's still an aggravation. But they knew it when they built it, and they can accept, to some degree, that that's a consequence of where it was built. But the biggest problem seems to revolve around Wilkerson Pike. Wilkerson Pike, periodically, water comes into that basin, and it's basically dammed up by Wilkerson Pike. It flows over Wilkerson Pike. Some of us may have seen times when Wilkerson Pike had water flowing over it, or seen the trash afterwards. When it does that, they get water into their house. Wilkerson Pike is an old, old street, old road, rather. It predates, well, it probably was there before the Civil War. It was a old, just a high-low road. We're looking to reconstruct that street. Wilkerson Pike is on the capital improvements plan that Mr. Lyons will be recommending to the city council for funding this year. It's my understanding it's included on that plan. And if the council approves it, we'll be moving on into construction. We already have acquired a significant amount of the right-of-way when we did some sewer projects across the remainder of the Gatton property and across the Corley property and across the Hale property. So, we've got quite a bit of the right-of-way we already need. We don't have all of it. But if we were approved, we'd first get right-of-way because the road is basically 90% to 95% designed. One of the design features is going to be to change the dynamics of how the water is backed up by the road. It looks like that we will be able to improve the situation where it less frequently will come onto the property. It may not be getting under their house as often. Now, another thing about their drainage situation, there's two things I want to point out. One of them is it's very much related to sinkhole drainage. They have a very large sinkhole on their property, and periodically, water just comes out of it with rainy events. It may not back up on the property behind them, but it comes out of the sinkhole. And that's a wild card. The sinkholes, there's a system, but it's hard to study that system. So, we don't know the reason. And again, they understand that's a given. The second point I want to make is that their system is not related to the, well, it's related, but it doesn't seem to impact. It's not the same thing as the system that the people in Manson Retreat told us about a couple of months ago. They are a side tributary of this system. So, it's not the same. The water that they're seeing, the Smithsons are seeing, is not the water that the people over off Manson Retreat were seeing, and then they were reporting to us. It's there. The water comes together, but downstream of both of them. So, it's not, if something is done to improve the Smithsons, it's not going to impact the people in Manson Retreat and vice versa. It's going to be independent. So, I wanted to, I told the Smithsons that I would report to them, and they placed their trust in me, so I felt that I should do so.
Well, they have some legitimate concerns, obviously.
Yes, sir, and we do take them serious.
The engineering for the retention and detention caused by this project, will we be assured that it would not exacerbate their flooding condition?
We're going to offer you that assurance, and we offer them that assurance, that before we issue any building permits, there will be a confirmation that the drainage that has been approved in the past has, in fact, been constructed in the manner that it was approved or that it exceeded the design expectation.
Okay.
And we will do that.
Our discussion that we had on building materials at our previous meeting, is that something we need to bring up now, or that be a site plan?
Mr. Lam, you're certainly welcome to bring it up now. I think in discussing with the clients, that they are, they're still working on that element. And they would be willing to see this matter deferred so that this could be brought up at a more work session where they can have their architect present and maybe have some more fully-developed exhibits. You see the exhibits that we've got, some of them were very helpful, particularly the back of the Bluestones building. You know, the back, I look at it, and I say, well, that looks like a front. It looks real nice. But they said, no, that's the back. That's the back. And it took me a while to realize that what looked like a nice front on another project someplace else was actually the back of a house, and that the front of that building was much nicer. They haven't developed a similar exhibit for the brownstone buildings in the motor court. I know at the work session, some of our planning committee members were not present, and maybe didn't have the benefit of that presentation. So, it's up to you how far you want to delve into it tonight. But I know, in discussing with them this afternoon, that they were fully-prepared to have a more of a work session. If that's really the only issue that's a stumbling block, they're ready to do that on, I guess it'd be the two weeks from now.
Okay. I think it's an issue that needs to be explored and discussed quite a bit, and if they're still working on that, perhaps a deferral is in order. Ms. Jones?
Well, I was just going to say, because I was under the impression, I did miss the meeting, but had the opportunity to meet with them individually. And as far as the discussion regarding the building materials, that was a, that would stop the whole project. And so, if that needs to be discussed further now, or do we defer and discuss then? But that was basically what I was told.
Well, as I said in my discussion with them this afternoon, we discussed the matter of vinyl as one of the building elements at great length. And I expressed to them that in this community, that there is a bias against vinyl, particularly where it's going to be visible to the public or where we have a tendency to cheapen the project, that the gateway is an area that we hold to a higher standard and an expectation. All the same, they're still trying to figure out a way to maybe balance their desires to find some ways to offset their costs. They're feeling, and they can explain for themselves, certainly, but their feeling is that they're putting a lot of investment into the fronts of the buildings where it's really, really important. And they're exploring ways to maybe look for some cost savings into the back house and utility areas. Perhaps some guidance at this point, if you were to defer, some guidance that they can work towards at the next meeting. If that's the only issue that you're concerned about, and I think there also needs to be some discussion about, is this project right for this area in terms of the density, in terms of the land use, in terms of the urban design? Are those right? And then, come back to this issue. Are the materials, the way this project's being wrapped up, is that what's holding it up? I think if that's the only thing, give them a little bit of guidance with defer and let them work on that part. If there are other issues, they need to know about it, other issues that might prevent you from being able to approve this project, like, for instance, is the density too high? Is this density wrong? Is multifamily wrong at this location? Those are the questions that are sort of big picture, that if you can't get past them, there's any reason to fuss about the siding.
Right.
Mr. Adalot, where have we allowed the use of vinyl in the gateway?
We have not so far.
Have we probably told other developers of projects that we would not approve it if it included vinyl?
We have, actually, there was one that was looking at using vinyl, and I think I termed it the vinyl and steroids, and quite humorously, but they've got the impression. And that was, actually, that was going to be on front of buildings. That wasn't just back of house. That was going to be on front of buildings, but it was going to be a combination of masonry and vinyl. Should be siding, where we see the hardy planks a lot of places. But as a material, we've not seen it used at all in the gateway.
Well, I think it's a fine-looking development, and it seems to fit with the master plan that we've considered before and approved for the area. But the construction materials is something that's a deal killer for them, maybe a deal killer for us as well. By allowing this developer to use vinyl siding anywhere in the project would open up the door for future developers to demand equal treatment, of course, which we should consider.
Well, I think you are correct. And again, I've discussed this at great length with them. And, you know, how do we tell the next guy, no? And that may be something that we need to consider if you are to defer, maybe, how can we reconcile this? And notice on the, their plan, Ms. Jones, you have the exhibit in front of you, so I can see it's the one that shows the yellow. The program is to use it in back-of-house treatments or where it's not visible from the public right-of-way. And it has no visibility to the main boulevards, and it has very limited visibility from other places within the site. It's really back to the utility. I looked through the, some of the exhibits that we developed when we developed the gateway overlay standards. You remember, there's a palette of buildings that we use serve as a, of what we liked. And there was a real heavy reliance on masonry, very little siding. But there was no, there was no development style like this, none. There was nothing that had this urban feel, and there was no courtyards that showed, well, to give guidance. So, I've got some mixed feelings about that. I don't, frankly, where it's really hidden and it's really utility, hidden on four sides, I just don't have as much concern. And if I can look at the next guy and say, you can't, your vinyl can't be seen from the public realm, I might be able to live with it. But that's not the end of the equation. What about you guys? And what about guys that's come before us before? Had you only included that in your areas, would we have looked at your plan differently?
My first reaction to that would be that, you know, even though it might not be public viewable from the public right-of-way, it's going to be backing up to somebody else's property that's going to be looking at it. And, you know, they're going to come back against us and say, you know, you've kept it out of everybody else's line of sight, but yet, you're letting it back up to me. You know, I know there are ways to do it and work and be more reasonable, but I'm just, you know, we just haven't done it yet in the gateway. We've been very strict in the gateway, and I'm nervous about varying from that.
Ms. Gilli.
First, I'd just say, I think the overall project itself is just incredible. I think it'd be a great fit for the gateway. I think it's, I really like the way that it's done. And I come back, I guess, to what Mr. Adalot was just saying. I think the only justification for using the vinyl in the back is that it's basically encapsulated within its own view shed. The ones looking at the back of it are just the ones inside that own development itself. Is that correct, Mr. Adalot, the way that it's being done?
That's, particularly the motor courts, yes, sir. The motor courts in particular, that's one area. And that's where they're trying to limit it to the more remote places.
But I would like to hear from the team to see if there are other ways that they've been looking at to see, because if this is a deal killer, we need to know if this is the only route they think they can look into before we make a decision about this, because, I mean, it is a good-looking project that would add a lot to the gateway.
Well, I think a deferral is in order myself. We can let them study it. They hear our comments tonight, our concerns about it, and then we can discuss it additionally in our next work session. Mr. Young, do you have?
I was just going to ask, I really hadn't heard anything about the, you know, always the people are concerned about apartments and overcrowding the schools. I'd like to maybe ask, what's your rental rates on this? And what's your anticipated usage with families with two or three kids in this? Is that a fair question?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and I'll address, I'm Chase Miller, I'm with Lifestyle Communities. We target, as a brand, which currently is heavily concentrated in Columbus, Ohio, and the Lexington, Kentucky area. We have about 4,000 units under management currently. We target a demographic that we refer to as the young professional. And young professionals are college graduates and moving through that next phase in their life after school where they want something that's nicer. So, there's a very heavy emphasis put on social programming. You've obviously seen the pub and the fitness center. Both of those are focused at getting that demographic in there. You'll notice that in the unit mix summary, there are no three bedrooms. There are no two-car garages. They're three stories. These are really geared at single people and young couples. So, in our experience, and I don't have any hard data that I can share with you, but in our experience, we get very few school-aged children living in our community. It's not that we don't want them, it's just that we haven't targeted that.
If we, Mr. Miller, if we do defer this, I'm sure you could come back with some type of hard figures on your average number of school-aged children per unit or something, based on your other developments.
Absolutely.
Based on our experience, we've run the same thing many times, and I don't have any figures with me right now either. But we see, compared to a normal residential, single-family home neighborhood, when you compare apartments to it, there's always considerably fewer children than there is in neighborhoods with yards. There's even fewer children in condominium developments than there are in single-family homes. So, but maybe you could help us out in that regard.
Mr. Lam, I think in looking at the overall master plan of the area, I think the zoning is all right. I think it's fine. I think the land use is fine. The density is, for this particular project's okay. And the streetscapes that we're seeing are outstanding, as Mr. Gilli pointed out. I really think we're down to the building materials. And I think if you can adjust that, be creative, come back with something, that we would be very receptive. But we've got a craw on our throat right now, and we're worried about precedence, and we're worried about how to tell the next man what to do and how to do it and how to spend his money and how to help him get a good project. So, and I think that's where we are.
Councilman Gilli.
Mr. Miller, while I've got you up here, I think you can sense that we all really like the project and really want this to be part of the gateway. Joseph alluded to at the beginning of his comments that perhaps there are some things that you are looking at, cost savings, other areas that might, do you see some feasible options that would help work out this vinyl issue?
There are a couple of approaches. I'd like to be able to regroup with our architect and landscape architects.
Sure, and I'm not asking you to go into, I just want to know if, I'm not asking for specifics or details, but is that something feasible, you think, that getting with the architect that you could be able to help us out with?
Yes, yeah, we could, we could look at trying to adjust things, and maybe we push things around, and we like it too, and we want to make an effort to make it work.
Okay. Great. If there's no other comments or suggestions, we're ready for a motion. I make a motion that we defer to the next two weeks. Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Question, Mr. Young?
Is that long enough for you, sir? Two weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
He'd probably say, "One week." We've got numerous seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Item C, zoning change request to rezone approximately 0.34 acres from RS10 to RM12 for property located along Bradville Pike, Vantage Group is applicant. Ms. Ely, I think you're covering this one, aren't you?
Sure.
We haven't heard much from you tonight. It's your turn.
Yes, Mr. Adalot took my turn last time.
He did.
Not that I'm picking out, but this third public hearing is to consider rezoning a small portion of property that's 0.3 acres, from RS10 to RM12. There's a parcel, a currently existing parcel, that's about six acres, and the majority of that parcel is already zoned RM12. There's a small 0.34 acre. There's a small 0.34 acre portion that's zoned RS10, and that area shaded blue in the map that's on the screen, and you can see that in your packets. This property is located near the intersection of Bradyville Pike and South Rutherford Boulevard. It's familiar to you because you did review and approve a site plan for a 60-unit multifamily development on six acres. And at that time, I think that we alluded to, at some point in the future, the developer would want to request to change that zoning so that the entire parcel has one consistent zone. It's almost a matter of cleaning up the lines so that this parcel has a consistent zone district. They have stated to staff that they have no intention of changing the density, so the number of units that's already approved, 60 units on six acres, will remain. And so that is below what is permitted, which would be 12 units per acre. The property is the South and West Rezone PRD, that's Planned Residential District, and they were rezoned to PRD to allow the development of the Brendleton Crossing section subdivision. The subject property that we're looking at was formerly a portion of the tract that did become Brendleton Crossing. However, it was left out of that development plan of that subdivision and has, sort of exists now as a remnant or leftover piece. The subject area has no street frontage, and it's not a separate land parcel, but rather it's a part of the same parcel zoned RM12. The planning commission should conduct a public hearing before you make your recommendation to city council whether this property should be rezoned. I think it would be consistent with your previous actions, but if you have any questions either before or after the public hearing, staff will be glad to answer them for you.
Any questions from the planning commission? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name is Mary Ann Smith, and I'm a property owner, own property at 2125 South Rutherford Boulevard. And with me tonight are four other property owners in that little section that would apparently back right up to what is being built, we're not sure if it's apartments or condos. And the reason I'm standing here and not them is because they said I was tall. So, if you'll bear with me, I'm not a professional speaker, but we have not been advised of anything except these little flyers we got in the mail to come here tonight. And our questions are, our concerns are, right now, is water runoff problems? Heavy rains like we've had the past few weeks? The water is pretty close to our back doors, and it takes a day or so after it stops raining for that water to recede. So we're concerned about that. We don't know where the road, access road would be, you know. What we consist of right now are property owners that own duplexes, okay? You know, not million-dollar property, but that's our little area. The space that would be developed is currently green space, and it's a beautiful space. We hate to see it go since it's so densely populated around that area of Murphy's, Rutherford Boulevard and Bradyville Pike. It's the only space we have where we have trees and squirrels and rabbits and other things, creatures. My question is, why does every single space have to be developed? Why can't we have a little bit of green space, you know? We have also questions about how far is the property going to be set back? Our property lines, granted, do not go back very far, but at the same time, since there has not been any development behind us, we maintain that property by mowing and making sure that it looks good, even though it's not our property, we do that. Basically, you know, that's our concerns, and I'm speaking for these other property owners here also.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Good job. Would anybody else like to speak?
Hello, I'm Bradley Carroll, 1544 South Main Street in Fife, Alabama, represent Vantage Development. Two of the main questions that were asked regarding to water runoff and open space setbacks and things like that, and I'm sure that the commission knows our site plan has already been approved, and we meet all the requirements with regard to stormwater setbacks and anything else. I would also like to point out that the rest of the property is properly zoned, and we have a site plan that is approved. And our impression of this was that this was something that both staff and some members of the commission felt like was a cleanup of a slightly silly-looking piece of spot zoning. It will not affect whether or not we build our property. That is, again, we're already moving through the process on that, so that's not what the hearing is about, it's about rezoning the small spaces there. We certainly do not think that will cause any problems with runoff, nor will we be any closer to anyone that is allowed by the rules, statutes, and zoning and the site that this committee has approved. So I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any concerns, but I wanted to make sure that we were focusing on what we were doing here. And I would certainly be open to any questions.
Mr. Carroll, when you did your site plan, did you include this one-third of an acre in the site plan?
Well, it was in the site plan, but we had no buildings or no structures in the site plan because it was not allowed due to the zoning.
So what are your plans for this tract of land here?
If it is rezoned, we will slide some buildings down, make some minor changes to the site plan. We will not add any buildings, we cannot add any buildings, there's barely, you know, we have been approved for a certain amount by the state of Tennessee, and so we cannot add any buildings. So there might be a minor adjustment to give us some more room for our buildings, but other than that, there will be no other changes.
So you're thinking some of your buildings may move over onto this site somewhat?
Yes, sir, but they will, again, be within any required setbacks, and we will, of course, follow all the requirements of the zoning.
Okay. Thank you. We may have some more questions for you.
Okay, I'll be happy to answer any one.
Would anybody else like to speak?
My name is Sonia Martin, I live on 2121 South Rutherford Boulevard, and I just have one question, and the gentleman, what is actually, what do we then about the, because that property back there is basically swamp? What is actually then, set the, just rent the water off, and our property is the special, English in my second language, so I'm looking for, attitude is some special training thing to rent the water off of the property and not into my backyard?
Ma'am, when you're three finished speaking, and if there's nobody else that has any comments, I'm going to answer your question for you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Uh-oh.
And I am short.
My name is Deborah Bohannon, I live at 2107 South Rutherford. I want to know, what is, I have privacy concerns, noise concerns, I also have concerns with, again, how will they access this property? Because we are currently zero lot line. Also, we have several questions. When is the, when do they intend to begin the construction, the completion? Just a lot of questions that we haven't, we weren't even aware of.
Okay, thank you very much. Nobody left back there tall?
Oh.
See, nope. I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, you had your chance.
She's too tall.
If anybody else would like to come, if one of the other ladies would like to come, they can. I'm going to have to close the public hearing if nobody comes forward.
I'm the shortest.
Yeah, I'm Suzanne McKnight, I live at 2115 South Rutherford, and I would like to know if this is going to be a done deal tonight.
Done deal tonight, okay.
I mean, if it's finalized tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Adalot, we'll be glad to answer your question for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, seem to have come forward, and we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adalot, you've got some answering to do.
We've got questions, and there's some good questions. Let me first advise you that for the property, Ms. Ely, could you put the illustration back up that we had? The property that this is...
Table apartment, okay.
Right there. If you notice, there's the area that's colored blue, and that's the property that we're considering for rezoning. And the area that's adjacent to it, to the left and above it, is zoned RM12. What RM12 means is that it allows residential multifamily, allowing up to 12 units per acre. A portion of Brendleton Crossing is also zoned RM12. And it was zoned that way since, oh, I guess, 1984, and maybe even before that, it was zoned to allow multifamily. Because it is wet, and you all know about the swamp back there, it's because it is so wet, the development plans that we've seen in the past for it just didn't work out. Back in the 90s, the lots where Brendleton Crossing was developed, because it was really easy for the developers to cut those lots off the existing frontage, they didn't have to build any access roads, and they built your homes. This property was part of that plan, and their property, because they wanted to develop the duplexes instead of single-family homes, like was permitted in RS10, they asked to be zoned a portion of it as a PED. In fact, just as a story that really has no relevance, I knew the lady that lived on that property before she sold her house. Actually, she died, and the family passed to her children, and they sold the house, which often happens. And it was Ms. Rogers, Ms. Wadine Rogers, and I've got some really quaint tales about her because she was quite a character. But the front part, they cut off and developed those lots, and the remainder was just sort of left in limbo, and it was added to the area zoned RM12 in terms of how it was owned. There were some plans to develop a subdivision. They fell through because it was drainage. These gentlemen arrived on the scene, and they purchased the property to develop some apartments. They are going to access the property from the part that fronts on Bradyville Pike. Have you all got a copy of the illustration? You'll notice that the RM12 has a frontage up to Bradyville Pike. So they're going to include the area that's blue, that's RS10, all of that into the complex. What they're going to do, they're going to meet the required setbacks, and between their buildings and your all's back property line, they will be putting in a ditch. It really is a property that has very poor drainage, and they will be building this drainage system that will take the drainage to a detention pond for water quality purposes and for stormwater management, and then it will go under Bradyville Pike into a drainage pipe that exists over there. Actually, they may have to do some upgrades of that pipe, they may have to do some cutting into Bradyville Pike to get it to the right standard. About two months ago, they came in with a site plan, and that site plan did not require a public hearing because they already had the zoning in place for what they wanted to do. And because no public hearing was required, we had no public hearing. We did confirm that they met our setback requirements, that they met the landscaping requirements, that they met the parking requirements, that they met, actually, they're brick buildings, they're basic, but they're brick, and they're fairly quaint structures. They're one-story buildings, they're not tall. The buildings, each of the units has like a little patio out back, and it will be, it's not a very large patio because they're constrained by the ditch. This property that's zoned RS10 was kind of like, well, we're kind of stuck. We can drain on it, we can put a detention pond, we can put some parking spaces on it, but we can't put buildings on it. But we can build the buildings up into that corner, if you look over there to the very far right on the plan of the RM12, it comes to like a little tight corner. And they had in mind, well, if we can get this rezoned, we might slide the buildings down, but it won't change the number of buildings that we're going to build, because our development program is already approved, we're not going to change the number of buildings. The drainage system won't change, we're still going to drain the property, and we're not going to flood our neighbors. Access to the property is still going to be off of Bradyville Pike. I'm going to add that they're going to be putting in a left turn lane in Bradyville Pike to help them to get into their site. Right now, there is no left turn lane along Bradyville Pike in that area. They'll be putting in a left turn lane so that people coming into their site needing to turn in will be, have a place to get and not block traffic. So I've given you an explanation that they will be meeting our requirements. If they want to, if this zoning is approved, and it's not critical to their development plan that they have it rezoned, but if it is, they will revise their site plan, and I'll have it in my office. Either way, I'd invite you ladies to come to my office and ask to look at the site plan, and myself or one of my staff, someone from the engineering department, will be glad to show you what the plan is and explain it to you. We understand the plans real good, we look at them every day, we know what they mean. You people who are laypeople, you may not understand what an architectural plan or how to read it very well, but we'd be glad to do it. After this public hearing, come what may, these two gentlemen will be glad to go out into the hall and talk to you about their project. They're proud of their project, they think it's going to be a good project, they want to be good neighbors. They'd like to introduce themselves so that if there are problems during the project, you have someone that you can call to work out the problems. And then later on, after it's built, you'll know who to turn to. Mr. Carroll, despite his brevity, I found him to be someone who seems to care about his project and would like to be a good neighbor.
Mr. Adalot, revisions to the site plan, will that come back before us?
It depends on the degree of the change. If it meets the threshold requirements, that would be for a minor deviation, no. If it exceeds those minor requirements, yes. Right now, I don't know.
Ms. Young.
I was just wondering, and you may have said this and I missed it, access to this property is going to be from down here on Bradyville?
Yes, and that's where they're going to be constructing the left turn lane in Bradyville Pike to facilitate access into their complex.
And buffering, we didn't talk about buffering, did we?
The buffering requirement for most of that doesn't exist, because most of it is RM12 backed up to RM12.
Oh, so the pub.
And see, right in that area, there are no buildings right now.
But if they change this to RM12 and it backs up to this pub, there's not necessarily a requirement?
Well, now, there is going to be some heavy landscaping, and I do think that if I'm, and I'm recollecting my site plan now, that there was a buffer built into that portion.
When did we approve that site plan?
Pardon?
When did we approve?
It's been about...
December 21st.
Boy, we've got short memories.
Well, the reason, the reason...
We slept since this.
The reason you don't have a clear recollection of it may be because it was pretty much meeting requirements, and it was fairly routine in its approach. It met zone requirements, it met parking requirements, it met setback requirements, it met height requirements, it met every requirement except for just the usual routine, the little things that people like our landscape, people look at and usually have questions about.
Well, I misspoke earlier, Mr. Floyd Wilson during our recess was asking me about access to it, and I told him it would have to come back to us on the site plan approval. So I misspoke to him, so I need to call him and let him know, but perhaps we might need to revisit this just for familiarity, because we have several of us that are kind of pulling blanks about it.
Of course, this is the one that had the, limited to the certain number of units because, yeah.
And I will add this, they're making an application for site development permits right now, they're on go, they're moving forward, and, you know, pretty much everything is in order for them to be approved. But we'll be glad to send you maybe a copy of the staff comments and the site plans that you all would remember. We'll send you that for information purposes.
Well, I think I misled Mr. Wilson, I don't want to do that.
I think he might know more about it than you may have, but than he might have let on, because I think he visited our office about it.
Okay. We've done the public hearing, we've had our discussion, we're ready for a motion.
One question.
You've got two questions.
Okay, I got one.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Young.
This ditch that's going to go on the back of these ladies' properties, won't that help their drainage tremendously?
I believe that it will. The ditch is going to be designed to capture water from their site to keep it from going on to you, and also to facilitate the movement of the existing sluggish drainage. I guess I would call the drains back there sluggish because when it falls, it kind of lays around and percolates into the salt after a little bit, is sort of the way it operates, isn't it? This is going to improve that situation a whole lot.
Mr. Gilli.
If their development isn't going to be affected whether this change is made or not, with the exception of maybe shifting...
This is going to improve that situation a whole lot.
Mr. Gilli.
If their development isn't going to be affected whether this change is made or not, with the exception of maybe shifting some of the buildings down, and it gives the neighbors that back up to it a little better sense of security of knowing that those buildings aren't going to be shifted, and why bother doing this and just leave it as is, and they can go on with the development they planned to start with?
That is certainly an option, and they had their site plan approved, knowing that that was the way it was zoned. Actually, I did see this as a chance to do some housekeeping, because this, this is a remnant, an RS10 zone in the middle of development will always be a, some kind of problem for the planning administration and zoning administration down the way.
I was able to pull the site plan up on the computer, I don't know if it's going to, if you all can read it, if they put it on the television screen, but the site plan that you guys have reviewed and approved is on the TV screen.
Okay, I got to turn around this way.
Does that ring a bell?
No, I remember this one.
Right.
And that is one sheet of about eight sheets, if I remember correctly.
Eighteen, maybe.
Eighteen.
Any other questions? There's no further questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the zoning request.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All ayes and one no. Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Moving on to the final public hearing, a mandatory referral for surplus right-of-way from the relocation of Fortress Boulevard, Gresham Lane, and Manson Pike to be abandoned. Ms. Ely?
I think Ms. Radalot requests that we present this item.
Now, he told me.
But I will. Okay. Mandatory referral is really a right-of-way abandonment, and it's for some surplus right-of-way that the city has after we've reconstructed the, the streets for Fortress Boulevard and Manson Pike. You have an illustration in your agenda packets that show an area shaded orange, and those are the areas that we're, we are bringing to you to allow them to go back to the property owners. The way that the property would be divided is that we'd go along the center line of the old, of the surplus right-of-way, and half would go to property owner on each side of that right-of-way, and this, this is something that's not a surprise to us, because when the city needed to do this, these road realignments and reconstruction, we needed some additional right-of-way from the property owners in that area. Those property owners gave the city the right-of-way without charging us anything, and we had conversations at the time that whatever was left over, that we would give them back to the, to the adjacent residents. So now that this construction is complete, and the roadway is complete, and we've determined what is excess and what the city has no need to keep, that's what we're bringing before you. If you do recommend that we abandon this right-of-way and take action on this mandatory referral, we would want to make sure that it's contingent upon the mayor, of course, signing the necessary instruments, that the city's legal department prepare the legal documents to achieve the abandonment, and that it's the responsibility of the property owners who will gain the property to provide the city with the necessary descriptions for the documents, which may require them hiring a licensed surveyor to get that information to us. But we, I'm not sure if Ms. Radalot had anybody, any of our utilities contact him to let them know that we need any easements in this property, but we would require that when that survey is made, and if we do find any utilities, we will require that easements be maintained, so that we can continue using the property. However, the ownership would go to those adjacent owners. Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing before it takes action on the matter. If you have any questions, either myself or Ms. Radalot would be glad to answer them for you.
Okay. Any questions before we open the public hearing? Mr. Ives, did you have any comments?
No, I do not. We have been looking at this, and actually began looking at it at the time we were designing this, the new interchange out there, and the reconstruction of Manson Fortress, so it's been on our radar the whole time, and now that that's completed, we're ready to move forward with this and clear it up. There, I think there is some development discussion at least going on with some of these folks, and so we just need to get this cleared up and, and ready to go. And again, of course, if there are easements of any kind, we'll retain those.
Okay. There's no questions, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. There's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Please for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Mr. Radalot, staff reports and other business?
Don't have any tonight.
A threat of death from the planning commission, I guess. If there's no other business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.